Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 16th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. I welcome you and I ask you to please stand and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
It's fine. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, and indivisible.
At this time, we'll introduce ourselves to you all. I am Jane Reggio. I am from the town of Millville.
Erin Venaco, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Amanda Gilmain, Millville.
Callie Sacco, Blackstone.
Madison Marshawn, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Carrie Godditt, Blackstone.
Sim Howell, Blackstone.
Matt Erwinworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalcow, Superintendent.
And you heard Kaylee and Madison introduce themselves from the town they're from, but they are our new student representatives. We are thrilled to have them. They have no idea what they've gotten into, but we do appreciate you volunteering your time and effort to just give us a sense of what's going on with the student body and what's so great about BMR and what's new and upcoming and how many days till graduation? That's a question we'll ask you every time, so. I don't know if you did, whoever wants to start?
I think they're juniors.
You could probably just...
Oh, they're juniors? They got like two years!
I'm a junior, Maddie's a senior.
I don't know how many days. A hundred and seventy, maybe? I'm doing that.
You get less.
I don't know.
Okay, I can go first. So, BMR Student Council Officers, they're meeting tomorrow for their first meeting in hopes to have a full council meeting next Wednesday because we are officially planning our homecoming after last year, we couldn't have one. That will be on October 1st from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. and it will be in the courtyard. Yes, it got moved from the 8th. And we hosted our first Spirit Day on September 10th, red, white, and blue for remembrance of 9/11. And then we also got to bring back Good Mood Friday, which went away during COVID. So basically during second class period and last period, we play like a song that will get all the students happy, excited for the weekend. We made it through the week and we're just glad to bring that back. And it kind of brought up morale and everyone seemed kind of happier this year with it back.
So, we have other clubs that have been begun meeting. NHS had their first meeting on Wednesday and they did a car wash fundraiser over the summer and completed the required eight hours of community service. The GSA met for the first time during the school year. Marching Dance first show was Saturday and they got first place and every show will now be on Saturdays. For sports, varsity volleyball is undefeated three to zero. Varsity soccer, girls, is one to three. Boys varsity soccer is one to three and that's it.
Anybody have any questions? Not that you better ask any, because they'll be really nervous.
I just have a great year. Thanks for being here. I did see like the first day of school looked like it was kind of fun. Can you tell us about like the activities that you guys did?
So, it was kind of like a preview day. So, we did classes up until 12 o'clock and we got to see all classes because every day we have a period that drops. So, we saw that period too. I believe it was F. And we met all the teachers for 20 minutes, got a feel of what the classes were like. And then after lunch, we went outside and each grade met with their officers, got a rundown of what they're planning for the year, just general rules, and then we played some games. So, I believe freshmen played kickball. Seniors played nitro ball. I want to say...
Sophomores were ultimate frisbee.
Yes.
And juniors were...
Whiffle ball. So, we all got to play together and really like create bonds before the school year started.
Yeah. I heard some singing.
Oh, yeah. We had a lip sync battle. It was students versus teachers. The teachers won.
Fun.
I'm thinking because they knew their songs before.
Probably. We were kind of thrown into it.
That's great. It's a good thing you didn't invite me to that one. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
So, for your reference, you're always welcome to stay and you're always welcome to get in part of the discussion. Like if you see something on the agenda that you think, hey, they should hear what the students think, you're welcome to stay. You're also welcome to graciously depart. So, the choice is yours. And thank you, thank you. We look forward to the year with you.
I would love to say I just have to get back to dance, but thank you so much for having me.
I would also like to say, but I have a lot of homework.
Well, there might be some fun topic down the road. You never know.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Okay, moving along on our agenda, we have a warrants and some minutes from the August 19th meeting and I'll entertain a motion to accept those as one consent agenda.
I so motion.
Moved by Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the warrants and the minutes of the August 19th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? At this point, I would open it up to the public if there's anybody who would like to address the school committee with something they want to share. The floor is yours. Hearing none, we'll move on to school committee items and we'll start with the retiree health insurance coverage.
So, we actually have with us tonight a representative from MIA. I'll invite him to the podium. We have Chris Bailey, who is here to walk us through a proposal on transitioning our retirees that are over 65 onto our Medicare/MedX plan. And these are individuals that did not originally pay into Medicare, so there are some caveats about transitioning these individuals over. And Chris is here to present the situation and some of the, some of potential benefits from it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, committee, for having me. My name is Chris Bailey. I am the Director of the MIA Health Benefits Trust. We provide the health insurance for the district as well as for the towns of Blackstone and for Millville as well. So, as Matt said, we're here to present what we call the Post-65 Retiree Program. And this is a program that enables our municipal accounts to actually purchase Medicare for individuals who are retired and over age 65, but do not have enough quarters to qualify, quarters paid into Social Security to qualify for free Medicare Part A. Because of that, they don't have Part A, they're not required to pick up Medicare Part B, and therefore they cannot be transferred to a Medicare Supplement Plan. So, the result is that these individuals, and the school district has 11 retirees and two spouses, they remain on the active employee plans, plans that are intended for the employees, in this case your HMO or PPO plan. This is despite the fact that all these individuals are well over the age of 65 and really should be on a Medicare Supplement Plan. In general, because of their advanced age and care needs, overall as a population, this, these individuals tend to drive more cost to the plan and leads to greater increases overall in your employee plan, the plan that's intended for the employees, when in reality the claims exposure should be shifted over to Medicare. So, what this program does is offered by MIA and Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we're the only entities in the state currently that offer this program, is it gives the opportunity for the district to buy the Medicare Part A for these individuals, as well as pay for any premiums or penalties that they have accrued for enrolling in Medicare past their 65th birthday. What this does is that while the district absorbs some cost for that, that cost is actually far less than the claims cost that's being compiled by these individuals to pay for their medical care. And those, those claims costs go directly into the developing of your rate renewal every year for your HMO and PPO plan and leads that renewal to be higher every year than it needs to be because you're paying for claims that really could be shifted over to Medicare. Now, as I understand it, I believe the committee has, have seen this plan before in this program and I think you have some information in front of you regarding it. You know, we kind of can walk through a little bit of the impact. And Matt and I have had a lot of discussions regarding this program and the district is in a little bit of a unique situation because generally what ends up happening for most municipal accounts that we have is that the savings that the employer achieves by moving people out of more expensive HMO/PPO plans and into the less expensive Medicare Supplement Plans, that savings kind of offsets the additional Medicare costs that the district will have to pick up. In this case, because of your premium contributions only being 50% for retirees and some of the, you know, the higher Medicare costs, there is actually, the district would have to absorb some additional costs and I believe the numbers work out to about additional $57,000 annually that are additional Medicare costs that are above and beyond the premium savings. Now, the benefit to this though, which is saying, well, what are we paying $57,000 a year for, is that on average for our entire book of business, each one of these retirees drives about $20,000 per year in medical care. Now, obviously some drive far less than that, only a few hundred dollars, but others could be way into the six figures per year. But on average, we find for our entire book of business, it's about $20,000 per year. So, when you have 13 retirees, that's $260,000 in medical claims costs that are going directly into your plan and that are calculated into your renewals. That could be pulled out and a vast majority sent over to Medicare and taken off your risk. So, because of that benefit, the district for your HMO and PPO plans right now accrues about $3 million in annual claims to those plans. So, by pulling out this potentially up to 260, you know, sometimes even higher than that, you can pull out nine to 10% of your total claims load that's onto those plans and it will lead to much more stable and lower rate increases going into the future. Now, when Matt and I, we've been talking about this for really a couple of years now from the time we've introduced the subject till today, and we've gone through a couple of different iterations, but what MIA is prepared to do in our latest proposal, and Matt and I just talked about this earlier in the week, is that in exchange for agreeing to adopt this program, we refund the program by automatically reducing the district's next renewal by 3%. So, whatever the underwritten renewal comes out to, we'll just take 3% right off the top of that. And it's actually worth noting that the MIA Health Trust, we actually don't even develop our own rating renewals. We have a third-party actuary, Milliman out of New York City, that develops our renewal. So, we're not behind the scenes pulling the strings and doing everything. We get the actual hard renewal from our actuaries and then whatever that says, we'll just take 3% right off the top. So, that should be about a reduction of about $90,000 or so in the first year. And this program would go into effect at the same time, that's July 1st of 2022. Now, I've said a mouthful and given you a lot of information so far, so I'm going to, you know, kind of open it up with some questions from here. Yes, please.
How long are you willing to give the 3% discount on the renewals?
Well, the 3% is for the first year, right? So, that lowers the first year. What ends up happening is the, the claim savings, which we estimate to probably be around eight or nine percent annually, that flows through each additional renewal. So, automatically your renewal should be lower by just removing those claims that accrue every year out of that renewal.
Okay, so that's eight or nine percent reduction off of the 3 million in claims?
That's correct. It should be about annual. And again, that's based on our book of business numbers. So, your, your results could fluctuate year to year. Some days, some years could be quite a bit lower than that and some years could be quite a bit higher than that, depending on what type of care your population is getting that year. But on average, it should be about that number.
Okay, so you're talking $25,000 to $30,000?
$25,000 to $30,000, I'm sorry, I'm going to fall in.
Off the, off the three note, okay, so my math is wrong.
Yeah, each point is about $30,000. Yeah, right.
And that's just for the first year?
Yeah, just for the first year. And then the remaining savings should flow through in future renewals, which should create a much more stable renewal pathway when we're talking two, three, four years out. So, your renewals for the next several years should be lower just because you're not paying the claims for these individuals. They're all getting shifted over to Medicare.
I have a question.
No, go ahead, please.
We, we traditionally, since I've been involved with the district and MIA has been terrific to work with, we've only seen claims of, not claims, we've only seen increases no higher than 2%.
Mm-hmm.
So, just to, I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. If we end up with a 2% underwritten renewal for next year, then we would end up with an actual net of a negative 1%?
That's correct. You'd actually get a reduction in that scenario.
Or next year.
For the first year is when we provide that incentive. It's an upfront incentive to try and get you to move to do the program.
So, for the 11 individuals that are current, that number could increase in the future.
It could increase.
If there's a 64-year-old now.
Right, yes. It could increase. It's really based on individuals who are hired, and I believe the magic date is March 31st, 1986, and not necessarily hired by the district, but hired by a municipality or the state of Massachusetts before that date. That now works, now works for you as now one of your retirees, right? So, there definitely could be some more coming in. And on the back end, as people, you know, not to be grim, you know, age, you know, eventually they age out.
And what, what will they, that, an individual, and I know it's all different because they all have different things, but what will they notice as a difference?
Well, they'll be, it's actually a really great benefit for all the retirees who are impacted because they can go on the MedX Medicare Supplement Plan, which has no out-of-pocket medical costs for any of the procedures. The only copayments they have are on prescription drugs. Now, your current active employee plans actually have pretty high deductibles and copayments for hospital services and a lot of other services. So, not only will the premiums that the retirees be paying monthly be less, even after factoring in the fact that they have to purchase Medicare Part B, but their overall claims cost, the overall out-of-pocket cost, I should say, should be significantly less. And obviously, the more care that they're getting, the more savings that they'll achieve. So, it's a really great program for the retirees and once they understand it, were able to get over that hump of explaining to it, they should be really excited. And we've been doing this for about five years, have influenced it in about 35 groups and about 400 retirees and not one complaint. It's just, it's one of those programs that's really a win-win. And we've actually presented it to the Mass Retiree Association and they are actually big proponents of the program solely because of the benefits to the retiree. The Mass Retiree Association actually does not really care about how your health insurance plan is running. They want, they want to know how their retirees are doing and they feel, they heavily endorse the program and it's been featured in their newsletter several times.
So, this would be effective July 1st?
Yeah, next door.
But they'd have to, July 1st, 2022?
That's correct.
But they'd have to opt in in January?
That's correct, yeah. So, the Medicare open enrollment period is January 1st through March 31st each year. So, they would have to opt in. So, what we would do to support that is we'd hold retiree meetings, most likely unfortunately not in person, but we actually use the Tell-a-Town Hall Service, which is the same service that the mass retirees use. So, they can just call a phone number and listen into the presentation and we mail them all the materials for the presentation beforehand and they can sit in and listen to the presentation. Not optimal, not ideal, would rather be in person, but you know, with the risks that are out there, we need to, you know, use an abundance of caution.
But if, if we, if we as a committee vote to make this change, then how do, is it up to us to ensure that they all know and...
Oh, no, we'll work very closely with you. We have a detailed...
Because we'll make sure all 11 or however many.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. We work to do all the outreach. What we do is we actually provide you with language to send letters out on your letterhead because if we just send it out on my letterhead, it'll go right in the trash and, you know, who we are. But if it goes out on your letterhead, gets their attention, it'll provide them information on, you know, when the, when the meetings will be, how to sign on, and all the information on the program as well. But we'll work very closely with the district and we'll do as much of the lifting as possible. But sometimes they're going to call either Matt or his office directly because it's a known, you know, known entities that will go there for some questions, but we work very closely. It's a very heavily supported program.
I actually, I actually have another question.
Of course.
I was, could have possibly asked before, but this 1986 date, it didn't come up before for me. I know that the district can check to see who was employed by us prior to 86.
Right.
And we could potentially ask employees if they had been paying into, you know, Medicare prior to or how many quarters they believe they may have had. Does MIA have a way to access that information?
We don't have a way to directly access it, but what happens now is when an individual approaches age 65, they're required to make an appointment with Social Security. Those are mostly phone appointments right now, again, for the same reason why we can't meet in person. But then from there, they'll get information as to whether they have free Medicare Part A and then can just purchase Part B, or whether they're not actually eligible for free Part A. And what we do is once a program is implemented and these individuals are turning and approaching age 65, we will advise them and provide the information to say, even if Social Security says that you're not eligible for free Part A and you don't need it because of that, you should pick it up anyway because the district will be paying for it for you.
And even if they missed one quarter, the penalty is still a flat penalty and it's for the remainder of the time that they're on the program?
They need 40 total quarters to qualify for free Part A, but if they have 29 or more, in between 29 and 39, they actually, their Part A premium is just cut in half. What we also happen, now you have a relatively small population, but what often happens is through this process, we find a couple of individuals who actually were eligible for free Part A this whole time and they just either didn't know it or they just denied to tell you. Because you can be eligible for free Medicare through an ex-house that you divorced 20 years ago, through military service that you didn't think applied. There's a number of different ways you can be eligible for Medicare and individuals aren't always aware because when they turn 65 and went to Social Security, they may not have been eligible at that time, but then in the subsequent years, something else could have happened that, you know, allowed them to be eligible.
So, you would find that out during this process?
Yes, yeah. Mm-hmm. So, it should...
You can only start the process if we've already committed to doing this.
Oh, yeah, that's correct. That's correct. You know, we could, you know, if you didn't want to do this, we could work with you in a process to have everyone re-verify their Medicare status as well. I mean, you know, we're, you know, whatever you want to do. And that way, if you did have a couple of those people, we could try and find them for you. But again, it would, you know, require outreach and letters from the, from the district, which we would help you draft and all that. So, that is certainly an option.
Now, we have, what's the Insurance Advisory Committee for current employees? What's the deal?
No, we have retirees who sit on that as well.
Okay, so is this something that has to be, like how does it work with retirees? Because it has to be bargained, right?
No.
This would be a decision of the, of the committee.
So, and I will say, I've been on the advisory for over five years now. I've met with Chris many times and so the retirees are represented at those meetings? Mr. Hartnett actually is very active and I know he's supportive of this and, and he does well communicating with the group of retirees that, that are probably all on this page. And it is something, I just want to reiterate what he said, it is something we've been talking about probably for three years now. It's good to have the information in front of us and I am actually glad that Matt just asked that question about our, our percent being lower than three for the last, I think, four years. So, I'm happy to hear that it would go negative. I mean, that would be wonderful for us. This is something usually every spring, we're sitting here sometimes having to try to work with the unions to, you know, unfortunately, it's been the reason that our, our copays have gone through the roof for, because we tried to work it out where we're not at eight or nine percent and then we end up in a different plan. So, I'm happy to hear that. That was one of my first questions when I saw this paperwork was, well, what if we're not at three?
Right. Yeah, I mean, if it comes out that, it comes out a zero, then you'll just get a negative three, you'll get a three-point reduction.
So, this, but these 13 individuals will actually be affecting our next year's rate. If they're not coming off till next July...
That's correct.
So, the next, next fall into spring of '23, we will still be carrying the weight of these. So, I'm going to be here, I know you're going to be here. I think we need to remember that when, when we're talking about, well, you know, there's the, the frequent flyers or that we need to remember that we're going to be minus 13 and that should give us a better year in '24.
That's correct.
So, my question, my next question is, what is our timeline on, on committing to this or not committing to this?
In general, we would like to start sending communications out to retirees usually by second, third week in October. So, I would say probably a month to make a decision. Do you have time to think about it?
I do believe it was last, end of December into January when we were like, and I think with our meetings being remote, we just lost that time last year because it was something we were talking about last year at this time and then it never came to the table. And then that open enrollment period is January to March for them, so we didn't feel that was fair. It wasn't going to be enough time to bring it to, bring it to the committee, then bring it to the retirees.
That's, that's my thought process. If open enrollment is in January, starts in January, we need to have this finalized and out as quickly as possible.
Yeah, we will have it on our agenda as an act, it's only discussion tonight, but as an action item, our first meeting in October, not our September workshop, but our first meeting in October.
Matt, this might be for you. So, this penalty is per person per year? $57,000 per person per year?
No, that's the aggregate.
All together, okay.
Let's see, I can get...
Okay, thank you.
Again, it assumes...
That was a little scary. I didn't ask that earlier.
It does assume that every single individual will have the full penalty, so hoping to find some individuals that have the half penalty because they have over 29 quarters or maybe don't have, you know, a premium or penalty at all. But this assumes the full load.
Chris, how long would this Medicare outreach try to really get a full assessment of who might still end up moving on to these, you know, coming into this bracket later? How long would that take? Could that be a relatively quick process? Because I'll be honest, I, you know, my fear always, you know, speaking to this is, number one, we don't really ever know what our rate is going to be next year.
Right.
So, it's great to hear it'll be, you know, 3% lower, but I'm like, oh, then does it just become 6% and we get three, you know, we get three taken off? Well, I trust, I hope that's certainly not the case. And you mentioned that it's underwritten by a different company in New York. My other fear with this program is we, we get a 3% reduction for this year, we take 11 individuals off and over the next three years, 15 more people end up joining this program.
That was, that's why my very first question.
Right. So, I mean, it is possible since you only have 11 retirees now, it's probably not going to be 15 on the back end, but you will be adding more people. So, that's more Medicare costs, but it's also more individuals that you will not be paying their medical care for, that Medicare will be. And the net is, the reason why you're doing this is it's generally much cheaper to pay these Medicare costs than it is to pay their medical care.
And we have 13 though, not 11.
It's, yeah, it's 11 retirees.
Eleven and two spouses.
Two spouses.
Have you seen a scenario where that, where that didn't work out that when you thought it was going to be sympathetic savings to the operation and has not worked out?
Not yet, no. All, all of our groups who have done this and we've done it for some larger groups, including City of Taunton, who had 96 lives impacted, all of them, what's happened so far is that, you know, we gave the discount and then the rate, you know, increase has really stabilized. Now, you guys have also experienced some pretty stable rates over the past few years, so we can't say specifically it's this program, but it certainly has not been any groups that had the opposite effect where we did this and, eh, well, it didn't work. Of course it works because you're not paying the claims of these individuals anymore. And they just keep, you know, they're just keep getting older and, you know, it's logic dictates as they get older, they probably need additional medical care, you know? I mean, it just takes, you know, one hip replacement, you know, with the rehab that falls up, that's like $80,000 to $100,000 right there. So, the cost of medical care is just insane. So, any chance that you can get to move that cost of care onto Medicare, really where it should belong, is advantageous for you.
Anyone else?
I guess, is there a way to avoid this list from accruing in the future? Like, I guess I... Like, I guess, I, I honestly, I'm not gonna lie, I. I like, don't understand the whole, I don't understand the whole retirement, like, somebody on here is seventy seven years old. How did, how are they not qualified for Medicare without us paying for it?
Because they never, they never paid into it. So when you, yeah, so when you work, when you have your paycheck. You have Medicare taxes, whatever, taken out. But if you work for a, a system. Um it used to be a lot of state system, a lot of school systems, a lot of colleges and universities. That had their own um retirement plans or invest, you know, investments or, you know, whatever. Um you never paid into that tax.
So there's no fixing it because this person is.
If they've never done it, they've never done it.
Years have passed.
Cause they have to have forty quarters, so they have to have ten years.
And work another few quarters.
Seventy seven, I'm saying see you later.
They have to have worked ten years or forty, forty quarters.
In a municipal type system.
In any kind, it could be a cashier, but anyone that paid into that Medicare tax.
Okay, thank you, sorry for my.
Only, only know it, Tammy, cause I didn't pay into it for years and now I'm trying to stock up those forty quarters.
Right, so this is complicated stuff, um so most people don't know about this and the fact that. Uh most other carriers, consultants haven't figured out how to do this is just shows that it's complicated.
Can we check the current employees of the school system? To see the ones that are or are not paying, paying in? Do we have that as a mandatory thing now?
Oh, so, um after, I believe nineteen eighty six, everyone, everyone has been. Um I could, I could check to see who started with the district prior to nineteen eighty six. But I wouldn't be able to track whether or not they had a different job prior to.
I, I understand, I'm, I'm just looking at some way to forecast the cost going forward.
If I had to guess, I would say you have another three to five individuals that are gonna age into this program and that'll probably be it, based on the total numbers you have now. That's basically about the percentages of what we've seen.
But if they were employed, they, they're going to age into our program because they're retiring from here? Or they, they were employed before nineteen eighty six?
Um they would have to be retiring from here, so it'd be current employees who are retiring at turning age sixty five that you have now.
But who have not been here ten years.
Right.
So I know of them, I know personally of one employee that is still in this bucket. Yet works a part-time job outside of this district so that they can try to build up these quarters, so that they don't end up not being eligible.
Here is actually, um to address your question again, a scenario we have seen and it's, it's um. Not super common, but we have seen it, uh especially in larger groups that moved a lot of people. Is they had individuals who were eligible for retiree insurance, but because they had to take. The H M O P P O plan, which had a high premium and deductibles, they opted out of it. But then they hear their employer, in this case, the district is implementing this program and now they can get on that medics plan, they come back. So I think Pittsfield, for example, we did seventy six retirees, they actually had three other retirees who were just off their radar, who came back on and said, hey, I wanna come back on your insurance. You know, I retired in, you know, two thousand and three and opted out at that time.
So did Pittsfield have to pay the penalty for that?
Do we have to let them?
Yes. So again. You know, i- it's very difficult, I mean.
So are you saying that they, they didn't stay with us when they retired, they're with their spouses?
It's covered somewhere else, they might have bought a, a plan on the private marketplace. Um we haven't seen many of them, uh in the four, quarter five hundred lives that we've done. You know, it's maybe one percent, yeah, two percent tops, um but you could have someone, you could have two people, you know, it's hard to say.
Mr. Hartnett might know.
Everybody over sixty five in Blackstone Millville. Holy moly. Uh I, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of a. I don't know, it's a gamble.
And where is our constant?
It's at the back, it's the very last.
So we have to over budget for this just in case we have that return.
But we never know. Anyway, I mean, we have to budget that way too.
If they've accrued the forty quarters. Since nineteen eighty four, right, if they've worked for ten years. Between nineteen eighty four and now.
Then we should have no surprises.
And that shouldn't happen.
Right, that's correct.
But it won't happen.
Right.
Yeah. Right?
Correct.
That's why I'm, I'm feeling what you're feeling, we shouldn't have that many surprises, it's not like we're saying. Two thousand sixteen.
Right.
We're saying nineteen eighty six, so that's.
Well, uh let me clarify actually, because um the individuals who were hired before nineteen eighty six. When the law changed and required everyone to contribute, they were exempt, so those individuals still weren't accruing quarters, so they were hired before that magic date.
Even if they worked up until.
Yeah, yeah.
Got all that.
I, I think they maybe had the opportunity to opt in, but they didn't have to.
You have to look at before nineteen eighty six, who's been. Still here since.
I believe that's why we have a penalty that we already paid. There were a few individuals previously that when that change was made, I don't believe they were. And uh then. And then we actually paid Medicare a penalty from some historical uh individuals right now. It's, that's like a big separate.
Matt, can I go back to your, your scenario where somebody's in our district? Working for us, so, so those, those quarters are counting. But then if they get a second job, then does the qu- the quarters double? Like, I don't understand why, why would a second job help that person?
So, can I? I'll try that. So, so somebody who's working here, who's been working here before nineteen eighty six. They opted never to pay those, they're not paying into Medicare, they have no quarters.
Oh, so they're not, so I thought after nineteen ninety six you had to pay.
No, if you started working before nineteen eighty six. You're grandfathered, as they like to say. So you didn't have to do anything, but now you're like, ooh, I would kinda like that Medicare and not have a co-pay. So now you're trying to take the part-time job to get those quarters or whatever.
And can we let them opt into the Medicare with us or to pay in? Like, can, can they change their mind if they, and if they're an employee of the district in nineteen ninety? And they chose not to pay into whatever this is? Can they then change their, isn't it beneficial for us to let them pay in?
They, they may have missed too many quarters anyway. So regardless, I don't know that we can, I think there might have been a one.
Just, I'm trying to find a solution.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I'm unaware that if individuals have opted out, they can suddenly opt back in, but even so, they would need ten years. Uh and if they were hired pre nineteen eighty six, they're probably at least sixty right now.
Yeah. Yeah, got it, okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, great questions, actually. Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, we, we can, okay. All right.
Well, thank you very much for having me.
Oh, great, thank you for that.
We're gonna to go out of our order for a moment. And we're going to do our summer um twenty twenty one programming review. Because I think we have some really special guests, we might have to get home and do some homework, so.
Good evening, everybody, um tonight we're gonna hear a little bit from our, uh from our staff, from our friends. Students and they're gonna share with us uh some of their experiences from the summer as uh. Everybody remembers, we had uh about eight different summer programming, spanning over four hundred fifteen students. Um that ran pretty much, uh some of the programs ran us all summer. And so we have this evening representatives from our um. Twenty First Century Program, the Boys and Girls Club, our Acceleration Academy, their credit recovery. And we have a couple of stars here with us that are gonna talk about um the experience from the student perspective. Which is always the most important.
That's awesome.
Um so with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Rumka, who is going to.
Uh, nope.
Okay, as uh Dr. DeFouco said, uh we had so much going on this summer. Um it was exciting, um it really, we didn't have a, really have a summer off. With the building was open every day. Um so we were very thankful for all these programs, so we have our twenty first CCLC uh program. Boys and Girls Club and also Acceleration, Jeff will talk about. So our goal is take every day, so make it fun for kids, so it, we don't wanna make it like normal school. Right, we want them to have fun, so we put a lot of um learning into games. And uh um and, and challenging the kid, jumping if you have to. And we choose activities that incorporate, even though it's fun, it's have objectives. And also align with the standards and we want them to think. And these youngsters over here will share with you some of the project they, they have done.
Normal school is fun, by the way, I just wanted.
And, and somebody put, make learning sneaky and fun, wanna elaborate on?
My name's Kelly again, by the way, I worked with the program. We spent every day figuring out how to disguise lessons, so the kids would not know that they're actually learning. But it was really fun that day. Uh definitely a challenge to get creative, but it turned out great.
Yeah, and you, as you can see, some of the number games and they do pair editing and they actually writing. Um STEM activities and music and odds.
They're stacking cups.
Yeah, this, Aiden can explain that, what is that, Aiden?
Like little pieces of.
Pool noodles?
Pool noodle?
Yeah, pool noodle and they made it. Like leave all of our balls on, that we had to make a tower and whoever it was the biggest one.
And was yours or did it kagaboom?
We went high. Like high, then it kind of fell, so then we had to redo it and then it was moved over, so.
Aiden, you mentioned something to me there about that ch- project today. You learned something from that project, not just making the tallest, you know, uh uh tower, if you will. Um you said something else, what did you say?
Um we did that with teamwork. We did it all together to make one whole building, because if it was just me, I couldn't even do one new. Teamwork makes a dream.
And then uh music, uh Ms. Paulson, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Oh, yes, uh through the program, we were able to purchase twenty ukuleles.
Are they all green?
No, some of them are black.
It was quite a learning curve, uh for me and the students, but uh we had enough that every student could use one all by themselves. And not only did we learn how to play some songs on it, how to hold it, how to take care of it, but we also integrated some science in with the tuners on it. So very painstakingly, teaching kids how to tune a ukulele. And talking about how the pitch and the vibration, it can be felt in the tuner at the top.
I may need a lesson from them.
So um I don't know how many of these slides are all straight together, but at the Boys and Girls Club, we did a lot of different activities, as we mentioned. Um we tried to incorporate STEM activities because we know this episode's very eager to build things and some of them actually lasted. Two to three days, so it was really interesting to start the activity, explain it. And then see a herd of kids come running down the hill because they were so excited to go right back to it. Uh and we basically had like a portable classroom that we sat up with the wagon, opening up tables, setting everything up and. Really just kinda making it on the go, we covered a lot of different lessons, like bee hotels, where they learned about solitary bees. Did know what learn charts, um know what to learn and have learned. The water balloon relay was really funny, um. The kids got really into that, they put math problems on the balloons, but of course, we also had them racing. In the summertime, if you put water balloons in anything, I think you're gonna be interested in it, I don't know if that video will play. Um bear with me, I took these while we were just roaming around with everything, so.
Forty five minus fifteen.
I got that one.
Very good.
So then they get the balloon to throw?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. They couldn't pop it, they had, if they got the math problem right, they could collect it.
Oh, collect.
The team that had the most water balloons at the end got to throw them. But then we had to make sure we picked them all up, cause we're really concerned about the birds.
We are, and the birds.
And then here we have uh math and ELA Jenga, so we kind of took the massive, really fun Jenga and we wrote numbers on each piece of it. And kind of made a categories board where it was either answer a word problem, um. Identify verbs, nouns, any kind of ELA and math sort of question, and we had them with their whiteboards, pretty much challenging and. I'm telling you, I'm terrible at Jenga and I was so shocked at how many things they actually removed before it finally came down, but it was a blast. And then, um so we proposed a problem about being trapped on an island and needing to fly away. So we did an airplane STEM activity as well, which was interesting because we got to work with measuring. Um, you know, teaching a few of the students that had never built an airplane, different techniques to build airplanes, so a lot of direction following.
Sorry, a few students who had never built an airplane, like people have actually built airplanes?
We did have some rainy days where we were um inside the stone house, so we tried to make best of uh the activities we could do in there and bingo's always popular. I mean, I don't know who doesn't like bingo and they had no idea that math was gonna be involved, but they enjoyed it. And then the lava lamps was very fun, uh we did measuring of the oil and the water, um. Got a little bit heavy into the science and actually explained. What keeps the water and the oil apart and asked them what they knew as well, so then they came home probably with a ton of fun facts. And they all really enjoyed picking out their colors and creating them. And then comic strip uh dialogue, that was interesting, we did. Like, what was your favorite day at camp, uh illustrate it, explain it to us, and we were very big on the reward system, especially when we saw those faces. That came every single day to our, our um, our tent. I mean, we were on the walkie, hey, guys, come on down, I kind of sounded like a flight attendant at that point, but it was really entertaining and then we would give away books for them. And then as well as uh book covers of their favorite day at camp as well. And then at the very end, we had so many books and everybody was so interested in it that we just. Corralled everybody over and made sure that they all had the opportunity to get. A new book to put in their library at home or have something else to read for the rest of the summer.
I do wanna show you this note, I got that from fir-, well, this written by a first grader, I mean, second grader. And uh that was the note I got on the first day of summer uh program. So they had a great time and Rebecca, you wanna talk a little bit about what you did?
Yeah, sure, so my name is Becky Boulay, I am um the second and third grade adjustment counselor at the complex. I worked alongside with Erin Martinow, who's the fourth and fifth grade adjustment counselor at the complex. And we kinda picked up the social emotional piece of the Boys and Girls Program. We did work closely with the teachers, um but we also worked on, you know, a few other goals that were kinda separate from the educational piece. Uh we wanted to keep contact with those tier three kids who need that additional support over the summer. Uh we want to support students who are making the tr- transition from full remote learning or even like a hybrid-based learning. Into like a very interactive environment. Um we did have quite a few kids who did attend the Boys and Girls Club. And uh who were kinda in that situation and we really formed those relationships with those students and got them more assimilated to that interactive environment. Um the methods we did that, we did check-in, check-out times for the students. Um we worked with the club staff on a daily basis to find out, you know, how did these kids do yesterday? How can we support the counselors, how can we support the families? Um and alongside of what the teachers did, we, Erin and I also held daily activities. That aim to foster communication between the kids and build those social skills, we had a lot of fun.
So before we play the video, so come up here, so you are the most important, right? So we wanna hear from you, go sit over there on my computer, okay? So, I'm gonna just ask them a few questions, so you both went to the summer program and I knew you had fun. Because I told you to say that, right? No. So, Towers, um, did you have fun? And, did you have fun?
Yes, I had fun.
Would you do it again?
Yes, I had fun.
Would you do it again?
Would you do it again?
Oh, yes, I would definitely.
So, Towers, I like. Why did you like it?
Um because I liked STEM, that was my favorite. Those are my two favorites.
Yeah, but you love the ukulele, right?
How about you, Brooke?
Uh, I liked it.
And why did you like it?
Because we just got things done in like five minutes. And we had a bunch of extra time.
You like those things, yeah, yeah. So did you learn something from the summer program?
Teamwork. We, I learned like, before fifth grade, I had, I had no idea what I was doing, like homework and for everything. So for the summer program, they told us what we're going to be doing. So I was like, I already know that, I already know that. You know, like, they're all impressed with me.
So he told me today that they were doing rounding in the summer. And today, in class, they were doing rounding. She say, I feel good because I was able to answer questions. And I feel like I knew this before everybody else. So that makes you feel good, right? Yep. How about you, Brooklyn?
Do good on the grades.
So the summer program helped you?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Brooklyn's a little shy.
Brooklyn, what's your last name? What's your, what's your name? What's, and we know it's Brooklyn now, but what's your last name? Walsh, Brooklyn Walsh. And you're in what grade now this year? And you felt ready for it?
Yeah.
That's awesome. And did you make any new friends? And do you still see them in school? Well, that's nice, right? Nice.
So tell us, last question. You said STEM was your favorite.
Yeah.
And how about you, Brooklyn? What's your favorite from the summer program?
Music.
You get a good grade over there. So anything else you want to tell us?
And STEM.
Nope, anything, anything you want to tell us about the summer program? Anything else? You're going to do it again next year, right?
Yeah.
Brooklyn, would you do it again?
Yeah.
And, and is it nice to see the teachers that you saw all summer and see them in the school? So it makes it more comfortable, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To add to that, um, coming back to the middle school this year as well and seeing the new sixth graders that were in the summer program. It was like, hey! Across the cafeteria, even with a mask on, I was like, oh, my God, welcome back. How's it going? And, you know, I've always been told sixth grade can be very scary. And I was like, if you ever see me in the halls, just come and ask. I'll be right there. So they were so used to coming right up to us and talking with us. The familiar faces definitely makes a big difference.
I think that's huge. So to the staff, would you do it again?
Oh, most definitely. I live right around the corner and I thought it was the greatest, like, I mean, to work over the summer. It'd definitely be a lot of other summer jobs I've had.
Sure.
I enjoyed it and I just don't get really tired of this, so.
Nice.
I also want to ask Ms. Paulson to share, you know, her experience besides she complaining every day she's tired.
Acceleration Academy too, so I really had no, no break from anything this summer. But I would definitely do it again. It was really nice to see kids in a smaller group. And I feel like I really got to know them a lot better because we would have a morning meeting. And I, you know, you were in my morning meeting. We'd talk about our schedule for the day. And then we had other time where we just talked about the weekend or random facts and just whatever we wanted. And I feel like those kids, I really made like a deeper connection to. And plus, ukulele was a lot of fun. And now we get to use it this year too, instead of recorder.
Oh, my God!
I was in the recorder age, so I remember.
Any questions for? Any, any questions for?
Could we just have the young man's name? I don't think we got it.
Aiden.
Aiden what?
Aiden Lele.
Thank you.
And what grade, fifth?
This way here, when you walk across the stage at BMR, we're like, hey, we met that kid.
We saw Aiden in action today, right, Dr. Murphy?
Yes. Yep, he doing great work.
Rounding, but place value and getting ready to do some of that work.
Yes, could you come teach my college, do you?
Sorry. I didn't mean to play it right away.
No, no. Well, we've been seeing the kids three days a week. Um, I see alternating grades every other day.
We were able to purchase new instruments.
We've learned ukulele, we've played xylophones, and it's been a lot of fun. I think it went pretty well. We did a lot of fun games. We did the yard seed games with the wooden dice, addition and subtraction, sight word games, hunting around the room for rhyming words and diagrams. It was really fun.
My main project with them was doing the Ted Harrison landscapes and trying to just kind of open their eyes to different color schemes. Kind of basic foundation. Tried to mix it up with the media watercolor, um, lined with shark, fish, and zen.
They were drawing something landscape and they were able to describe the elements. And I asked them a question, did you think that you could do something like that at the beginning? And they go, no. And then when, you know, they look at their final products, it's like, oh, I really like drawing. They can't wait every day, want to come into my office and show me what they can do.
It started out pretty weird and then I had to, like, fix it.
I had to start over once because I didn't like that design. Red, orange, yellow, green, purple, dark green, purple again, and then another red.
I made like a mistake, so I had to go over the sand because I made it yellow.
And then now today, we're kind of having a little free for all bracelet making day. Um, we're making bracelets.
This is a summer enrichment program. We did a lot of engineering and building, a few science experiments. And for our final project, we're doing an egg drop. So the students each get an egg and a ton of materials. And their goal is to protect the egg from breaking when I smash it on the ground outside. Oh, that cracked. That was a good one. Sounded like it cracked. Now open them up and see if they survive.
Did it hurt?
Jeremy survived.
Mine survived, but then I squished it and then it cracked.
It survived.
We just did egg tossing. So if it cracked a little, a little bit more, then it would have broke. But I, I squished it, so it cracked.
So we can see some improvement. We see kids gain extra skills that they didn't have, which we identify prior to the program.
We did a assessment at the beginning and the end, and they, they seemed to improve. So it was a really good, fun way to learn.
So they really enjoy the program. They get both academic and, you know, fun activities.
They seem to be enjoying themselves. I have a small group that comes in every morning and we always talk about our days yesterday. We talk about what we're doing and how much they're enjoying themselves.
It was awesome. I had so much fun. They told me they had a blast and they can't wait to start school.
The summer program has been excellent. And they're really blessed. I try to remind them that not every school is able to have a program like so.
I have notes from kids writing first aid, how much they enjoy it and thank you for putting this together. And the teachers enjoy, you know, working with the kids. I have a couple of teachers who are not teachers in the district, want to come back next year.
I think it was a fun time.
I loved it.
I like it a lot.
It's very fun.
I had a lot of fun. It was really nice. I liked it.
The reason I like this place is because I can see my friends and they gave me this.
It's definitely teaching me a lot.
It was cool and I liked it.
It is cool.
I liked it. It was, it was fun. I got to see all my friends before school. It was really fun.
It makes us understand stuff about like science.
The school is fun. You should come here to Blackstone. It's very cool. You can have fun and learn.
Yes, Jesse did two videos.
Did you submit it any, like, did you send? That was a grant program, yes, no? Did we turn that in as part of the?
Is that an artifact?
Reporting or, I mean, like, did it go anywhere other than?
We, I mean, we put it out on social media and everywhere.
Well, yeah, we should, but.
There is no requirement to submit any type of evidence.
I feel like people should see that. I feel like educational people should see that. Not regu, you know, we all should too, but.
The people that supply the grant should see that.
Yeah. Or the, or the, or other educators to try to do similar things. Thank you.
Well done.
Skip Jeff.
Go ahead, honey.
Thank you, Brooklyn. Thank you, Aiden.
Jeff can chair.
Thank you very much, folks.
Oh, thank you, and thank you for the work you did.
Thank you so much for having me and see you all soon.
Yeah.
My name is Jeff Kern and I oversaw the three summer programs between the middle school and the high school. First program that I oversaw was the Edrisir program. And that was more of a credit recovery, your traditional kind of summer school program. The second program that I oversaw was the project based learning, also known as ramp up, depending, the PBL program. And basically what that was designed to do was to have kids that needed additional support, possibly credit recovery, to come in and learn it in a different way. How that was determined of what would be taught was based off of star scores, basically what was needed. And it was also based off of surveys that I had sent out to sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth, ninth, tenth, and also eleventh as well, to say, what are the three essential skills that students need when they come in to see you? Which would also be, what are the three essential skills that they need to have when they leave you? So that's where we base these programs off of. And the kind of caveat to being in this program or to be teaching this program was, we're going to do it a little bit differently. Not that the traditional way or the way that they normally do it is bad, but it's more of, they kind of went through this program, so let's try something a little bit different. And let's try all project based. We didn't quite do it or advertise it as fun as it was with the elementary folks, but that's in essence, the undercurrent that was there. And we also did similar with the Math Academy, was based off of star skills needed for the group of students that came in as well as what was recommended for those particular students, which was your incoming eighth graders and incoming sophomores. So I'm going to kind of go through and show you a few things. What I, what I kind of laughed about was when I saw the video of the elementary students, it was so cute. And they were all like, I loved it. I was so happy. I didn't quite hear those testimonies. But what I did hear was from one student and, and I was listening and they were all kind of trying to figure out if they should go, you know, we hate this, this is just awful. I hate my parents for putting me here. And that was kind of one of the table discussions. And the sort of contest that came out of it was, well, this isn't that bad, which translates into elementary speak, I love it. I'm so happy I'm here, I'm learning something. So I didn't quite get that celebratory, but I kind of did from that teenager adolescence.
That's better, at least you didn't get a huh.
Correct. That was actually from high school students.
There you go.
It was good. So I'll just kind of highlight just a couple of things. So to give you an example, one of the things that students did is they built their own bottle rockets, so to speak. And you can kind of see here the two liter bottles. And basically what that was for, I'm sorry, that's not coming up. Not sure why. So basically what that was for, if you can kind of see the little triangle here, basically what they did is they launched the rockets. And they had to figure out and gauge basically height, distance it went. And then they had to figure out angles of what the triangle would be. So rather than just, here's the worksheet, here's the triangle, figure out here and so on, they went outside and they actually did this. And they had kind of an interesting way to do that. We also had, so what I'm showing you, and I apologize, when I'm showing you, that's from the PBL program. I'm going to show you some from the PBL, some from the ELA PBL program, project based learning program. So another thing that was in the PBL program is we saw some writing that they had to do. And the, kind of the prompt was, what has changed over time? Why is it that the American dream has sort of changed for us? And what does it mean to you? So this is a project that they kind of put together, looking at it from the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s. And this was based off a reading that they had done. And they kind of came up with this answer. The part that jumped out to me was the last sentence here. I thought it was very telling. And I was like, that's something I may have said. So I was kind of interested to see a teenager say, you know, basically, social media is a driving force here for the American dream and getting all the likes. So I thought that was kind of an interesting perspective. And those are, again, those are about the high school. The middle school Math Academy, very similar. Again, in terms of, they looked at the star skills. They, they came up with the ideas of what do they need to come into the eighth grade? So just some projects, again, they, they looked at, they need help with angles and graphs and, and so on. So this is just one project that they had. And you can see here, they're numbered. So they had these different problems that they actually had to go and do on the wall. You know, just kind of thinking outside the box a little bit. And you can see here from the Math Academy, you know, the kids are out and about.
So they did the taping too?
They actually, some of them built the problems. Yep. And they had to actually go in the hallway and solve the problems.
Are they really?
And from what I heard from the teachers on the middle school about this is that it was a success, they would do it again. They saw growth. They saw about a 25% growth in from beginning to end, which is huge. And, and to me is an absolute success. One of the other things that they did, so they had the Math Academy part of it. And then because the numbers are so large at the middle school, which was fantastic, they had thirty-five or maybe a few more. They kind of rotated them in and out to get them some art in as well. And this is the mural, I believe it's downstairs. And so this is the mural they, they started. And I think that they're also going to kind of continue this with an after school club, if I remember correctly. So it's really great. And, and they actually studied murals that were in Worcester, around the Worcester College Art Area, Art School. And they kind of designed their own from there.
One of the students drew the horse?
Yes. All that is student. Yep. All that is from students.
That's their drawing on the, all the T-shirts and the signs. That was a student competition for the instructional focus.
So back to the high school, they had a number of labs that they did to, again, kind of hands-on, fun way to do this thing. And, and the good news is, is that we looked at MCAS data at the beginning of the year. And one of the things that the MCAS data said was that there were concerns about or there was some trouble areas with real world application, meaning taking, you know, something beyond just the worksheet and going, well, what's it going to look like if you do this? How, you know, what's the area of an, how long will it take you to cut the lawn? And if the area is such and such, based on time and so on. And Ethan Rowe did a great job. And he actually did some of these real world problems ahead of time. And one of the things that he did is, he looked at acceleration. So this is about dropping an object, and how much will accelerate over time? And this is all student work. This is actually, a lot of this is still up in my office, on massive poster boards. And I, I got to see the kids work on it. They actually were on the second floor of the library, dropping things off. They were measuring, they were looking at it, they were having a great time doing that. The other thing they did is they actually got scooters, and they actually scooted themselves around in the, in the classroom and in the hallways a little bit. And they worked on a project about, okay, let's, let's talk about acceleration again and distance. I apologize, this one is the remote control car. This is, they actually had remote-controlled cars, and they actually did speed and distance and so on. So it was actual application of the math, and that's what we've, you know, determined was needed. This is actually the scooter work that they did. So they got to do both of those. One of the, I guess the highlights for the students... I'm not sure why that's not available. Was the Barbie, Barbie bungee jump. And basically what they did is, off the, off the balcony, they, they actually did measurements in which they figured out how to determine how many rubber bands they needed based on weight, acceleration, and so on. And they had to predict how their, how many...
If they wouldn't kill Barbie?
Exactly. Barbie and Ken, we were equal opportunity. No one was injured in this experiment, so it's good. So they actually figured it out, and they had a contest winner. And they, again, tracked, they actually did some experiments on the wall with the yardstick, just here, and then from there, they extrapolated the data that they figured out, and then they did the mathematics, and they said, okay, I'm going to need 24 elastics, let's go do it off the thing. It was really great to see. I do have the video, I'm not sure why it's not coming up, so I can certainly send that along, where you can see them working on it in the classroom first. And you can see again here the data. And this is the time when the kids are going, yeah, this isn't too bad.
Right, right.
So, which again translates to me, yeah, they did, they had a good time doing it. Back to the PBL program, they actually read Marigolds. They did some annotating, as you can see here. And what they were asked to do was to basically talk about their experience in life, what the symbolism of Marigolds was, and talk about it. So, again, in the MCAS data, one of the things that we found was comparing two sources, and also understanding the author's purpose. Like, what is it they mean when they use certain types of words and so on? So this was actually very timely that they did this. And this is just kind of one student example.
That's the student?
Correct.
Wow.
And this was another. The second part of it is, why do you think that your students gave representations like they did? Were they positive, were they negative, and so on? I thought this was pretty insightful. And also in the PBL program, in the, for the middle school, they actually gave them some pre-tests to see where they were before they started. They talked about their, kind of their vocab. They gave them a reading to determine where they were, to make sure for six, seven, and eight, that it was appropriate. One of the things that they worked on was critical thinking, and also one of the initiatives here at the middle school was the ACE, Answer, Support, Explain. So a unique way that they actually had it done is, they actually took them outside, and after they did a reading, they actually had them answer, support, and explain their position in chalk and on the walkways. There was also, they used discussion topics. One of the things that was a need was being able to not only answer, support, explain, but also take a side, take a position, support your position, come up with your own position. So there's a number of these, this is just one example. They had probably about 10 of these over a six-day span, in which they had to kind of take a look at this, read it, interpret the author's message, go outside, do some type of answer, support, explain. So it was excellent. Look at it, and last but not least, they also, I apologize, they focused on mood and tone, and that was where they also interpreted those articles. And the last thing they did was, one of the things that's determined, they have a very difficult time graphing, knowing how to graph, where to graph, where to put things. I'm not sure why that's happening again. But basically what they did with here, if you can kind of see, they were given a graphing, and it actually ended up coming out as a football player. And so they did some outside as well, like they kind of did their own kind of graphing on concrete with chalk. So overall, teacher said it was a success. Students, as we talked about, success. Growth was shown at all levels. It was very productive, and all teachers said, yeah, they do it again.
I can just give a, just a shout-out to Jeff and Mary, who's not here, Mary Vaughn. But we started meeting in January to flash here to get all of this ready, and the two of you did, it's just an amazing amount of work. So big kudos to you and to Mary Vaughn, and to Dr. Remka, and to all the other staff members who put so much time and energy into this, it was a lot of work. But I, you know, it's funny, because I can't imagine summer any other way now, because having the students with us so much, and so many of them in so many places, and it was just awesome.
It would be anecdotal data, truly, but it would be interesting to survey both the students and the parents kind of in January of, did it make a difference? Like, are you noticing that it made a difference?
I, I think the student that was here with us, you could tell it made a difference for them.
I think the creative piece is like trying to figure out, and you heard Jeff say it, like, how do we, you know, how do we do this different?
Right, right.
And I think that, that was such an important piece of this. So you saw it, so much of this was project-based.
Yep.
But still offering some, like, more traditional credit recovery with tutoring, like, that was fine. But we also knew there are students that, like, you know, well, kind of been there, done that, didn't work, we need to do something different. So we, that's where we came up with these project ideas, and having those conversations, and with students and families, like, which kind of pathway makes sense for you? And some kids picked, they're like, well, I'd rather ediscere, I just want to get it done, let me do the online course and move on. Other kids were like, hmm, I think I want to try this PBL thing, and we tried this project.
And we had some students that weren't as successful as they wanted to be with the ediscere program. And we were in touch with parents, principals, and we pivoted from, okay, finish this, and then we're going to put you in the PBL to kind of get that additional credit, so that mash them together, and we're going to, we're going to get you some success.
Probably more engaging.
Probably, there were a few students that actually took those options and were successful.
Okay.
So it was good.
Great.
It's good to see the innovation.
Yeah, yeah.
Any, any other questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
For making the effort. I mean, I know that, that, the middle school, the high school, the elementary school took a ton of preparation that wasn't included in the days that people were in the, in the building. So we do appreciate that effort. A lot of, a lot of sweat equity went into those, I'm sure.
Thank you. And, and a lot of teachers really are the ones that made it happen, and they met with me, and we made skills, and we made plans, like, how can we teach this? Let's get creative, let's do some research. A lot of people had hands in this, and they, they really did a great job. And showed up in July and August to make sure the, the kids of Blackstone Middle had a great experience, and also, you know, got some skills and moved along. So a lot of people were involved in this, so.
The teacher feedback was awesome, that, you heard it. Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Even just like from visiting the classrooms and programs, but talking to teachers, like, after everything kind of wrapped up. And, yeah, I mean, some were here, like, literally all summer.
Yes.
And they loved it. They were like, this was a great experience, I'm definitely going to do this again. Even with the Acceleration Academy, which were like full days, before school starts, really good feedback from staff that, that did it.
And I had a number of them go, you know what I'm going to do next year? So it was like, it was good to see.
And we have these for the next two summers.
Right, it's a three-year, yeah.
Yeah, all of them. Yeah, well, boys and girls will be able to see what they want to do for partnerships.
That's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to share that. I just, I want the community to really understand and see, you know, what the kids, what the students did, because it was pretty awesome work, and the staff worked really, really hard.
Hope the numbers go up, if there's space for the numbers to go up. Okay, at this point, we'll go back to our school committee, and I'm going to turn it over to Tammy to walk us through our first reading of sponsorships and...
Thank you. So at the policy subcommittee, we, actually at a previous meeting here, we talked about, you know, just, we were always talking about, where can we, you know, get more money to do what we want to do with, for our students and in, in the district? And one of the conversations, somebody brought up, I don't know, that, you know, in other districts, there are corporate sponsorships on the fences of the baseball field, or those kind of things. And so this policy subcommittee started to look at the possibility of doing that here in the BMR district. We do have a previous policy KHB advertising in schools, which was sort of a shorter
Generic.
generic, you know, policy that basically said, we're not going to allow it. So we, actually, I, I will give more credit to Jason, or I don't know who, behind the scenes, or Matt, you know, sort of looked at other districts and kind of pulled together some language from this MASC. And so this is a draft of what we came up with. I, do I need to read this?
No.
Oh, good.
No.
So
So it will be, after today, it will be available in the minutes on the district website. So anybody who has interest in reviewing it before our voting of it, and would like to comment, they'll have access to it on the website.
And so, I mean, I think part of the committee's conversation, or the subcommittee's conversation, was just sort of making sure that advertisements were appropriate and, and those kind of things. And with that, one of the points that we sort of wanted to do, which is in the last paragraph, is just not put, I, I think we talked about, you know, the burden of currently advertisements are in, like, the yearbook or like, you know, fl, programs that happen. And, you know, usually those are vetted through, you know, a person in the district that, you know. And so we thought that because these are sort of more permanent advertisements, that there should be more oversight, so that we're not posting something that we, you know, that is inappropriate.
Well, it's still, like, for the yearbook and newspaper, they'll still have jurisdiction over that.
They'll do that, yeah, we won't. I mean, because as we said, like, so, we put in the language of policy subcommittee and superintendent and or designees, which we can certainly discuss here, but what we didn't want to happen is that the drama club is doing their Pinocchio play, and they're waiting for us to meet. Like, we didn't want to change that kind of process. So that's that. So we would like consideration for this.
Anybody have any questions? Would like to find somebody who wants to give us advertising more than $5,000.
I know this is fresh off the press, but have we had it looked at by council to make sure that everything in here is legal and passed muster?
So Mass, the Mass Association of School Committees has a copy of this right now. They're reviewing it, and so our, our thinking was, we'll get their feedback, and, and any feedback from, you know, like, the public feedback from the school committee. And then we have a subcommittee meeting on October 6th, so we'll take all that information with Amanda, Tammy, Matt, and I, and we'll kind of mull that over, and we'll try to clean this up and get it back though.
But Tim, to your, so just for your information, that's what we generally do with policies. They don't go to our legal counsel, they go through the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and their guidance and
Thank you.
And that's who stores our policies as well. They retain them on, we pay a fee annually for them to retain them and review them on occasion, and that kind of stuff.
And, and in general, we also get the beginning language from them as well. So we might, we might look at other districts' policies that they have up, but most districts sort of use the MASC platform for the thing, so. So that's that.
All right, we will look for that in perhaps an October or later meeting. Thank you. Anybody have any? Next up on our agenda is the faculty handbook. And mostly for, for review, for discussion, if anybody read through and, and have, I had one, one? Well, I had some notes, but I had a few questions. But did anybody have a chance to look through? So mostly what, do we even have one now? Do we have one currently?
No.
So, and it's an opportunity when somebody new is hired, or because this is the first one, would go out to all entire staff, would have a page at the end that they would sign and return, saying they had read it, but just really puts in one place kind of all the legal keys associated with being an employee in the district. And also tells them of their, you know, not necessarily benefits, like contractual benefits, but, you know, how something operates in terms of if they wanted to take leave, or if they needed to, to, I don't know, just trying to think of what else. So, you know, for me, it was nice that it was information in one place, and a great reference tool.
Well, that was the goal, and I, we've had some conversations, and Tammy and I were speaking about it. We have, we have, it's, you know, it feels somewhat redundant, because it is somewhat redundant in the fact that we have all this information in different places. We have our policy handbook, our collective bargaining agreements, we have all of the trainings around the ethics that we do, and employment law. So, I mean, we have all of this information, but the plan was trying to get it in one place. So we were talking about how to even make it better in terms of trying to link some of the contracts directly in here, like, hyperlink them in, or looking at some of our policies, and maybe, you know, referencing those, and putting them, you know, links, excuse me, to those through this, and just trying to be clear about, about that. So that, you know, we're referencing the right documents where this information exists currently. Because there are, there are statements like on page four, under 1.2, contract and collective bargaining agreements, if a written contract or CDA collective bargaining, if it's there, then
Supersedes.
That's right. We tried to reference that, but I know Tammy had some suggestions, too, that weren't really helpful.
Hopefully were, but I had suggestions. So my, my thought was, you know, for some people, some, some employees know the contract, they, they know
Right.
they know what page, you know, I have colleagues, if I ask any question, they can tell me almost what page, what section, whatever, and, and they're very familiar with the document. But as I said to Jason, there are some of us who are not familiar with you. So, so to say that, you know, the collective bargaining agreement is going to supersede something, if they don't know that it's in the collective bargaining unit, they're going to take this paper and bring it to Jason and say, I have an issue, you know? So my question was, for the areas that we know are in the collective bargaining agreement, compensation, I mean
MLA, whatever.
Whatever, you know, could we just say, see, see the contract? So that, rather than have the verbiage here, and maybe you attach it as an appendix A, so that you, it's all in one spot, I don't know, I just... But my issue is that we, as a district, are, are not always good at updating every spot that things are in. So the more of the direct language you have in each of those places, then you have to remember. I mean, you know, the, the lunch policy always is my example of that. You know, we had 14 versions going on every different handwritten thing that we had. So just try to condense how many places you have to fix when something changes.
Well, and, and so my suggestion, or my thought in that very similar regard, is that if something does exist somewhere... if something does exist somewhere else, I don't think you need to pull the policy from that somewhere else, but you can reference that it's, you know, in, because we have so many different, we have a unit A, we have a unit B, we have a unit C, we have individual contracts. If you started attaching a whole bunch of stuff, you'd have a whole bunch of stuff and they're not the same. But, you know, if, if we do know that it's specifically, you know, there's something to this effect specifically in that contract saying that. The other thing is, I guess I would ask that somebody go through, and I, I try to do it myself and I'll send the notes to you, but a lot of times we say things like failure to dress according to the district policy. And, and I don't know that we mean policy. You don't know that we have a KBA XYZ. So I think we have to be careful with that because very, very, later on, you know, we talk about personal appearance, but that's not a policy. So I, I think if it's a policy, we need to, to have the policy and state KABXY or KA whatever. But if we don't have a policy, we have to call it, you know, guidelines or protocols or something of that nature, if that makes sense.
It does, for sure. What does matter? Want to use the right words?
Yeah. And, and I, I, perhaps will sound like a broken record. But I, you know, there's a lot in here, a lot in here that talks about, you know, no solicitation unless it's off work policy, but if it's during your lunch and the other person's lunch and the, you know, and no use of the, the, you know, I'm going to say school, technology for personal, you know, use, whatever. We have teachers who tutor in their buildings, in their classrooms, in their buildings. We have people who, I don't want to say solicit because, but they might put on social media that they have the Tupperware party. I don't know. Does anybody have those anymore?
Girl Scout cookies.
Girl Scout cookies, pizza for the band, or cookies for the band or whatever. I, I guess I, I don't like the, the, some people feel, reading this to the letter of the law and going, I can't do this. I, I have to be real, you know, I can't do this. And somebody going, eh, well, you know, it's not what the intent was. And, and I don't know how to solve it. I, I don't necessarily, and I don't usually like to say things I don't know how to solve. But I guess I, I'm concerned that we seem very stringent and we still let things happen, if that makes sense.
This is written, yeah, good point. I, I think we have to, I think we should talk about that. This is written to the letter.
Right, of the law.
Right. And what's okay and what's not. But to, but to what degree does anybody, yeah, you know, force following, I don't know the right words, but adhere to that? And I don't mean just around, you know, our, this.
No, 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 any, any place. I mean, I, you know, can't tell you in the office that I work with how many, you know, candy bars are on the shelf and buy the candy bar for
Sure, yeah.
the basketball team or the, you know.
And in, I mean, it would be hard to cover every area, but you don't, I, I don't think our intention is for that stuff to stop. Because.
It's not. But, but what I worry about is.
Is that people will.
Is that the, the employee who's, you know, new to the game and, oh gosh, I, I, I can't ask at work, doesn't have the same advantage of the, of the employee who's been here for 20 years going, ah, you know, it's cookie day. It's Girl Scout cookies or whatever.
Yeah, because I mean, it's years that you.
You conduct solicitations during your lunch period, coffee breaks or other authorized non-working time. So I think it actually.
So leaving it in the break room or the lunchroom.
Yeah.
Right. Forever, you know, we, it's just a commonality that you're going to find the Girl Scout cookie sales sheet in the lunchroom in January.
Stop it, disruptive about it.
Well, we could, we could actually put that in an acceptable use policy.
But how do we cover everything if there's things we're not thinking of? You know, you don't want to.
It's understandable. That's, you can't hit everything because you, you may have a basketball fundraiser that we'll forget about. That's, we couldn't cover into that because it changes from year to year.
I can say that whenever there is an issue that arises in particular, unfortunately, something that may happen that's negative or something that may go against the regulations of the school district, and we're looking to either take action or even speak about it.
Yeah.
An individual, the first thing that our attorney will say is, can you provide me the section of the handbook where it states that that individual is told that they can't do that? So I mean, it is, you're right. It's like striking that balance between there's allowances that are in here, but it puts a backbone together that, A, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, shows the employees their rights and their protections that they have, which is ultimately one of the most important pieces of this. But it also explains there are certain things that the district has to have, you know, supervision over and that if push comes to shove, there are things that can't be tolerated and that we would need to potentially, if decided, to take, to take action. It is, it's one of those.
Yeah. I mean, this line in there, Jane, I didn't read this as carefully. Now, obviously we're like, it's under the microscope, but electronic distribution of materials is prohibited during work time. So can they send a high school, all of high school Girl Scout cookie email at four o'clock? Like, that sounds like kind of not good.
And they can send it on their lunch, too.
Yeah. Well, we're not allowed to do that, but we're not allowed to do all types of things. But anyway.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't know.
It's a good, it's a good thing to think about, especially as you go through the different things.
Yeah, yeah. I just, you know, if you, again, I don't, I, I, I don't, to Aaron's point, I don't want to say you can't or shouldn't ever. But at the same time, I don't want to say, well, you did the band, so I get to do the Boy Scouts, so I get to do the church. And then is the church an issue because it's the church? And then I get to do the, and so, like, I don't want to, I, I don't, I'm not looking, I'm looking for a creative solution that allows people the opportunity to kind of do the things they've been doing, but in essence protects us from the ambiguity of, of, well, you got to do it, why don't I get to do it?
But it does specifically say during working hours, so.
Well, but your working hours and my working hour, you put it in the lunchroom. I may see it in the lunchroom because I walked in there to grab my water, but I'm not at my lunchtime or, you know, I, the working, the school day is the school day. And technically, yeah, it's your break. It, it goes back to the discussion of is my free period a true free period where I could do whatever? Or is my free period where I'm supposed to be doing the work that's planning for the, prepping for the next, I mean, it's the age-old argument. Sorry. And I, I, I don't know. But I'm just, I'm just, I think it's great. I think we need to, to move forward and I think we need to let it play out. And, you know, people have specific changes. I definitely think we need to get them to, Matt, is it Matt who's doing this?
But Matt, you said paychecks.
Well, I've been consulting with them.
Could sell, you consulted with them to.
Get the base of this.
But, you know, I just, I, I guess I think there are a few things that.
Yeah. If anyone has any specific concerns regarding any sections, by all means. And that's why we, we tried to get it out with the significant.
Yep, you did.
Times to, to review. And we're not looking to approve anything right now. So I think, again, if there's any questions, concerns, please, you can direct me, can you, via email? And I'll, I'll make sure that I, we explore whatever the questions are and get the right answers and make whatever changes we need to make.
The other question I have is, I know that the union doesn't have to approve this document, but should they take a peek to see if there would be any, you know, any issue? I mean, you know, Jane's bringing up an issue that, you know, is there anything that would stand out to them that would create?
It certainly might be helpful to have them look.
Purposeful grievance or something.
Where you want to reference where there might be conflicting information between the collective bargaining agreements or, you know, this document. I think that, that could absolutely be helpful because they might read through it and identify other areas where they say, oh, you should put in section.
Right.
2.6 of ours so that people know they can look to that as well.
Sure.
Okay, great.
One other thing, and this sticks out to me on page 13, 6, 6.12, you're saying use of company technology. And I, I've noticed some other areas in here. You're using company and school district and things back and forth. We need to have a standardized term that refers to the school district, whether it's school district or company or something. It just needs to be one set term and use that throughout.
Yeah. Because that was a subheading that, that may have been missed. But I don't believe there's many spaces that it states company. But again, it's the subtitles. I'll have to, you know, I can come through those again more thoroughly.
Anybody else? Okay. Next on our agita, agita, good new, new word, agenda, is the COVID-19 review. This is informational only. We had voted as a committee to bring up our mask policy on a monthly basis for review. And so that is the purpose on the agenda today, to bring it up. And the review is simply that, given the commissioner's guidelines and the mandate that masks are in the school, then our mask policy will continue, at least until our October meeting, when we review again. And I believe October 1st is the commissioner's date at which he also, or the board also will review. So that, it is not just information that our mask policy, as we adopted it, will continue at least until October. And then to the superintendent.
Thank you. And I'm going to actually ask Karen if you wouldn't mind joining us to speak a little bit about some COVID updates regarding active cases and test and stay and just give a overview to the committee in terms of what things are.
I forgot my glasses in my car, so hopefully I can read what it. So, so far this school year, we have had 16 positives. The breakdown of that is one in the high school, five in the middle school, eight at the complex and two at Millville. Of those positive cases out of that have been 52 in-school close contacts. Breaking that down, 27 of those students were within the three to six foot range and masked where they did not have to quarantine. 20 of them decided to participate in test and stay. Two were vaccinated and three decided to quarantine. As far as the current vaccination numbers, as of today, Blackstone for the 12 to 15-year-old group were at 43%. 16 to 19 is 52%. The town total is also 52%. Millville 12 to 15-year-olds is 35%. 16 to 19 is 57%. And the town total is now 43%.
So you mentioned the number of close contacts.
Yeah.
And you said the three to six feet masked. Are they still notified that they're close contact?
They are.
Okay. But they don't have to.
They don't have to quarantine and they're not required to test.
Okay.
Testing is recommended. They do have to actively monitor for symptoms, which people should be doing anyways, for the next 14 days from the date of the exposure.
And how many, is, is it still 48 hours prior to symptoms that you're going back?
Yeah.
Or is it 48 hours prior to a positive test?
It's 48 hours prior to the onset of symptoms or 48 hours before a positive test if they're asymptomatic. Thank you.
If I could just add one piece, I think probably two of the most important numbers that you shared were three and 50.
Yeah.
50 close contacts, but only three.
52 close contacts.
Had to quarantine. Right. And, and it was their, their decision to quarantine. They could have done the test and stay.
Yeah.
And because of masks and because of distancing, we kept the three feet, we have significantly reduced the number of, of students that would have to quarantine. And then on top of that, we have the test and stay option. So that number went from 52, which under prior models may have to quarantine, but because of the, the, the structure we've set up, the three that are quarantined, you don't even have to. They could do tests and stay if they decided to.
But the 16 who tested positive, who are maybe have been symptomatic or asymptomatic, those 16 are home for their 10 days or seven days or whatever they're based on their thing. And they're, are they getting that follow-up that we had talked about with somebody checking in with them?
Yes.
And who is, is testing all the test and stays?
Well.
I assume, I assume, so is, are you going to every building in the morning?
Done the majority of, yeah. Yeah. I've been going to, to different buildings.
So though it's great that we don't have people home on quarantine, we do have this large number of, of a population that needs.
20 people.
And, and are, is your goal to do it before they walk into a classroom in the morning?
Yeah.
Or before.
That's to be.
Yeah. Hopefully we grab them off the bus.
Yep.
That doesn't always happen because sometimes they'll slip by the person looking for them because I don't know the majority of, of these, especially like the little people. I, I don't know any of them. But hopefully we catch them. Otherwise, they'll come get, you know, drop their stuff off in the classroom, come down to the medical waiting room and then get tested and wait the 15 minutes, which becomes incredibly long if you're a first grader. And so that, that was fun, trying to keep them all occupied in there.
And you're still making all the phone calls to all the close contacts?
Yeah.
That's you. And how are the parents, are parents receptive to, obviously to the test and stay if we have that higher number? But even for the younger kids?
Yeah. Yeah. People have been, been very, very receptive. You know, I think they, they seem to understand that we're doing what we have to do to keep the school open and, you know, and.
Of, of the six from middle school and high school, are any of those break, break-through cases or do we not know that?
We've had no positive cases amongst our close con, our in-school close contacts.
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm referring to people who have been vaccinated and have contracted COVID.
There have been two cases of fully vaccinated individuals.
Any of the, yeah, students?
Well, two out of six because the younger ones can't be vaccinated.
But they could be teachers.
Yeah.
Or staff.
It could be, right. Okay.
Perfect.
And so what we will be doing is taking this information and we're going to put it on our COVID dashboard so that parents can not only see the, you know, the active cases and. So that parents can not only see the, you know, the active cases and, uh, you know, the numbers in each of the buildings, but they can actually get the additional information, uh, I think that was your suggestion, Tara.
Yeah, I think the breakdown is.
So the the twenty-seven students who weren't considered, who were close contacts but weren't, don't have to quarantine or test and stay because they were masked and three to six feet away. When they get their letter or they get their notification, it, they're told that the CDC recommends the PCR test, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and does Massachusetts have a K to twelve, like, testing hotline? So if I have to look, because school doesn't do the PCR test. So if I have to look for a PCR test, does Massachusetts have a school site that lets you do that?
They didn't even have it last year.
Yeah.
When we were Rhode Island, you're you're saying that because you.
I am saying that.
Rhode Island had it down, down for their schools last year.
They still do, still there.
They're they're doing.
Still there, but Massachusetts, so it's up to the parent to find the PCR test.
Yeah, I include a link in the email, uh, that goes to the state site of, you know, to find a test where you can put in, I believe your zip code and it'll give you places.
Yes, it does, yes, you could.
No, there's, there's no school site that they can just call that number.
Okay.
And then the only other piece under that is just the the recent directive from, uh, President Biden about vaccinations or testing for, uh, organizations that have more than a hundred employees. Um, we are waiting on the guidelines from OSHA that will essentially stipulate exactly how we need to go about doing that. So, um, I just, I I wanted to mention it, not because I have a lot of information, I certainly don't, but just because I know people are thinking about it and they're wondering about it. And so, um, I know that our school district attorney is eagerly awaiting the OSHA guidelines as we are and will be helping us craft, uh, the plan for implementation of that. Uh, but we're all still on pause until we, uh, get more information from OSHA. Can you, anything else on COVID nineteen? Any other questions you're? Thanks Karen.
You're welcome.
Um, that's a good segue into, uh, my next item. Um, we are requesting this evening that the school committee approve, uh, the addition of one more, uh, licensed practical nurse, um, with the increase in testing, the close contacts and doing all the work that needs to be done with that. Um, we are finding, uh, that we are a little short-staffed, um, to say the least, in the nursing department. Uh, we do have, if you remember back to last year, each of the buildings had an LPM. Um, and then we had one floating to the Boys and Girls Club that were checking our students in that were there when that program was open. Um, we did eliminate all of those but one for this year, and that was to help Karen cover the nursing office at the high school. Um, as we just heard, Karen is rarely at the nursing office in the high school. Um, and so that LPM has been really helpful, uh, but with the amount of testing and coverage, uh, that we need in the other nurses, uh, nursing offices, excuse me. Uh, we are requesting that, uh, the school committee authorize us in our budget to, um, hire one additional LPM. Uh, we are looking at a rate of between twenty-five and twenty-eight an hour, that seems to be the going rate for LPNs. And, uh, we have a hundred and seventy-four school days left of the school year, that's effective Monday. Not that you would have somebody by Monday if you were to approve that, but if you were to approve, uh, and we did hire someone at seven hours a day at the twenty-five an hour for the hundred and seventy-four days, it's just over thirty thousand dollars. Uh, Matt and I identified the money in some salary savings in staffing replacement costs. We were able to save, uh, on s- on a few different salaries, so we do have the money, um, in the, in the salary line. Um, that is not a, uh, a concern, but, uh, we do want the committee's approval to move forward with that this evening. And there is a draft motion if you decide to approve that.
And 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 LPNs are still available, like, you can't get an LPN degree anymore, but they're still available?
I think we would probably, well, I'm, I know we would try to recruit someone that we had working with us last year. We'd probably put out some calls to those individuals first and then we would post for LPN, yeah.
No, I just didn't know if we needed to say something other than that, since that's not a that's not a degree anymore.
We had better luck finding those and RNs, uh, registered nurses last year.
Anyone want to propose?
Motion to approve to staff a licensed practical nurse due to COVID nineteen testing that will require additional manpower.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Sarah, second by Tim, is there any discussion? Karen.
Um, so Karen's saying she's going to all the buildings, why aren't the other nurses doing the testing in the morning? Why is she the only person, like, uh, that's what it sounded like, but why wouldn't the MES nurse test the students in the morning?
Separate body pool.
What does that mean?
She'll tell you.
It it can be hard in the morning, there's diabetics that need to be checked when they get off the bus. Um, there can be other kids that that aren't feeling good or need medication. So it's a lot to try and be doing the regular nursing, um, needs and then testing this group of kids.
So, i- in my understanding, and I, so I could be wrong, because I understood also, um, based on the policies we created last year, that the students we are testing are not, are not in the same area and same spaces as the general student population.
Yeah.
So that's what I meant by separate buddy, you know, like, we don't put a child that we're testing with the potential that they might be positive, remember, we're trying to catch them off the bus.
Sure.
Sitting next to the child who's there to get their whatever for the day or just check in for the day. So, so you're looking at two, we had, that's why we had two in every school last year, so we could have two different like, things going on.
So we still have isolation rooms?
We do.
We do, yeah.
We kept those.
But it's like you can't be in two places.
Yeah, so in our buildings, they're side by side, so then we don't, I mean, again, I just, I should not compare.
Nurses can bounce.
No, they'd go to the next room. But, okay, just this question.
I guess we also on that note is, when you made the comment a few minutes ago, that sometimes the kids get by. Yes, if maybe the second person will help make sure they don't get by.
But they can't be in every building. That's doesn't sound bad.
Yeah, it it, it's a, a team effort in corralling them.
But you did also say if the numbers were, let, so say we have the entire football team at one point or the band, right? There's a service we can utilize from the state for that test and stay.
It, I'm still getting information on that, um, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with our program coordinator. It sounds like if there's a daily need, they can supply staff, but doing something per diem. Um, you know, if all of a sudden we had a hundred people on test and stay, they wouldn't necessarily be able to show up on Monday and do that.
But it sounds like we could be in a situation where we do have a hundred, I mean, if we already had.
We, we definitely could, so I'm, that's one of the things I'm going to discuss with her tomorrow. Like, what can we do to so we're not in that situation and have all these people and have it be nearly impossible to get them all tested in a timely manner?
And do we have, do we have backups for the back, so in other words, we have a nurse currently in every building?
Yeah.
Plus we have you who floats around the world.
Yeah.
But if one of those people is out for whatever reason, medical reasons of their own, what do we, do we, do the other people share or what do we currently do?
Uh, I I've been getting a day-to-day sub.
So there are like nurse subs?
Yeah.
But they're different all the time, kind of, sort of, or?
There's.
Not a permanent nurse sub, I guess.
We, we have, um, right now, three, I was just given another name, um, for, um, a possible fourth. Um, but, yeah, there's, there's a few people that I can call. And then based on, you know, their schedules and et cetera.
I like the idea of having one who's always available. Like our permanent teacher subs. Anybody else? Hey, there's a motion on a floor to approve a, uh, the staffing of a licensed practical nurse. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so, so move.
Thank you, and the last item, uh, I would be very brief on my report this evening is just to give a quick update on our school year opening. Um, we are at, I think, uh, week two today. Um, and, uh, it has been a really positive first, uh, couple of weeks to the school year. Um, in in the midst of all of this, I don't know, I I think some, uh, I know I kind of keep forgetting, which is kind of interesting, but we did unify two elementary schools, just want to keep reminding everyone of that.
That's been very quiet, how did it go?
Because it, you know, was such a big project and it took so much time, and I think it kind of got swept up at the ender toe of all this. Um, and people have worked so incredibly hard from the parent organizations coming together, the staff coming together, the students coming together, the families. Um, it's, it's gone really well, like, really, really well. Um, you know, I think, I think people are learning how to, you know, kind of live together, so to speak, you know? You, you, you know, you're, you're used to teaching with a certain partner or a certain team or by yourself. And then all of a sudden you have a, you know, a blended family of six or five for the first time. So I think there's a little bit of, like, getting used to different personalities and settings and, um, and, uh, it it really has, though, even with that, it has gone really well. Everything from transportation to, um, food service, all of the operational changes that had to happen in the schools, um, to make sure that it worked, uh, with, without issue. Uh, it has gone really well. It's, it almost feels as though, and I've been in each of the buildings three times, conducting learning walks with the principals and with Jill, PG, uh, looking at special ed programming, um, and it feels as though it's just always been that way. It doesn't feel significantly different, it's really interesting. Um, so we are, we're really, really proud of the work that everybody has put in to get behind the opening for this year, because it is a different opening, you know, we're not a hundred percent back to kind of quote-unquote normal, so to speak. Um, but all of our programs are running, our sports are running, our, uh, clubs are starting to get fired up in in moving, the Twenty First Century After School program started at the complex this week. Um, our instructional leadership teams are meeting and developing the, the new school improvement plans for the school committee, which we'll look at at the end of October. Our MCAS data is coming out next week publicly, uh, on Tuesday, and, uh, school-based teams are getting their arms around that. We're getting prepared to, uh, release that information. Um, our interventionists are, they've been working since day one in the classrooms. Now they've got their small groups and they're doing all their, their, um, their tut- like, the kind of the tutorials and the intervention groups are, are running. Um, our social worker, the new district social worker has been very involved across all four buildings. She's got quite a bit on her plate, uh, at the moment, but has spent a lot of time with our school-based teams. Um, it, it, it really has come together well.
That's awesome. Are you gonna, go ahead.
The other I asked, how's the traffic?
The traffic has actually been running pretty smoothly. The signs help. They're, they're very clear and people have been following the suggested pathways. Um, and in the beginning of the year, there obviously are some tweaks and and quarter turns that we need to make with respect to the, to the buses. Um, the, the car traffic has actually been really running smoothly, it's more.
So the car traffic back and forth, but the car traffic at pickup, I understand, is lengthy.
At the complex.
At the complex.
Yes.
I heard the same thing.
People not pleased with having to wait a certain amount of time to get their child. We're trying to figure that out and how to make it quicker, but I'm not sure, we just, we don't have the driveway long enough to do that. We're running two sets of parallel, uh, cars and we have a waiting, um, a waiting lot uh, behind the, right next to the basketball court.
I came at like five of three and last car in, so, no waiting. So I guess people get there too early.
So you're, you're out in a decent time at after three.
So you could get to the other school if you had to.
I don't have to, but I could, although, uh, uh, my next point to that is actually that after-school club started this week. So did it make a difference for, I don't care where you pick up, right, did you notice any difference?
It's definitely gotten smoother as we've gone on. It's just the number of kids, I don't know how to make it any faster.
Other schools are also dealing with, I mean, this isn't a drop, fast food drive-through, like, it takes time to safely get children in and out of vehicles.
Buses and parent pickup. Are the buses not able to fit in that loop over there?
Now, what do we have, like, thirteen or fourteen?
Well, you have parents in an overflow lot, so, and and I believe, and I don't know if they're doing it this year. The buses used to wait on the AFM side and mo- move to JFK in, even in the previous years when they were dismissing two schools, so I'm just wondering if that's been considered.
I'd have to review that with Neil and Jenny.
But you'd be giving the parents more room, per se, to be. But how does it work, do you pull up and they look for your child?
Come in, so they yelled at the kid.
Yell. It's actually very, it's very impressive, it's really impress, I mean, I, I guess, I, I'm guessing parents don't like to be in the waiting lot and wait their turn, is what I'm guessing. But it's really from a, from a driveway perspective, it's really impressive, like, it's like, Smith! Like, Smith doesn't get to think about it.
It's a sa- it's a very safe era, which is what.
And 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 the people, the staff who are running it are very like.
Very efficient.
Oh, and you don't open your door if you're on the wrong side and the child doesn't come out, I mean, it's.
Jane, have you been stuck in traffic?
I have, I have, um, I have sat and watched it both in the morning and the afternoon, just to kind of see and but I just, I, I, I would, um, based on my experience at Millville, when I was there, the Millville parents are probably in for a shocker. They used to get out and hug their kids and kiss their kids and there's no time for that.
They have been doing that.
They're not doing that, they do it on the cafeteria side.
Every now and then you get the one, though, either school. Is, I would think drop-off is probably worse, because do people actually go to the overflow lot in the morning?
No, drop-offs.
Super quick, so the line doesn't.
The afternoon, to your point, Tara, typically what always causes the backup is people getting there so early and lining early.
The first car is there between one fifty-five and two oh five. They pull up, because they're right near my office.
And then it just creates that entire queue.
So early.
Because they want to be first.
Yes.
Because they think they're gonna wait less, which is so illogical. Because you're waiting just as much just for the end of the day to come.
Yeah, it's baffling.
I think that's my favorite part of back to school is seeing all the memes on Facebooks. It's like, if you don't know how to do school drop-off, like, you don't belong in the drop-off line. It's one of those things that makes me so happy I have a kid that can drive.
My son's seatbelt, like, the second we pull in, he's like, seatbelt's off, his backpack's on, he's like, he's ready to go.
Oh my god, it's like, it's even in the rain, like, even in the rain. You just, they don't get wet, because they don't have time to get wet.
So, it's been a good, uh, even, you know, with the masks and everything else, and we've still had a, a s- a solid start. Not perfect, but a solid start.
Great, and we've worked out the wrinkles of mask breaks and lunch and all of that is.
We had an email we got yesterday from a fa- from a parent that had shared that, uh, her children, there's one at the high school, one at the middle school, had shared that, um, their, their kids are not getting consistent mask breaks, so we're working on that. We actually had, this email was sent to Karen, so Karen is connected with the two principals to help work on that schedule. That was the only one I have seen.
And they're talking during lunch.
Yes, we fixed that issue.
Yep, that was the only issue that we've had recently.
Okay.
So, so, you know.
Are we using tents or no tents? I mean, I know the tents are up, but are we using the tents?
So, so actually, it's, it's really dependent on the school and the teachers. Um, the custodians have asked, you know, do we need to put them up? And the question is, check in with your principals and if there's, if staff want to be using them, then the tents are up. Those places where the staff have said, we're not really using them, um, they get taken down. They are, they are timely to, to put up and down.
Yeah.
Um, because the stakes are large and it's, it's a lot of. Cause the stakes are large and it's, it's a lot of manpower. So we try not to take them down and, you know, put them up and take them down, but New England weather has other problems for us.
Also hurricane season, so.
Exactly. So, given all of these massive rainstorms, there's, and, and then the ground gets wet, so there's typically the question after, if we've taken them down, it's, is anyone actually gonna use them? Do we put them up for Monday morning or? But we're definitely staying on top of it and I haven't heard any concerns expressed, um, with regards to people wanting to access them, faculty wanting to access them and not having.
I think with the cooler weather too, you don't need to feel like you have to shield everyone from the sun, you know, I think it's a little different too.
Okay, just asking. Thank you, Dr. DeFalco. Mr. Aronworth.
Well.
Extra money.
So the first report that I have, um, these, beginning of the year, beginning of the year reports. The, uh, the first report is the revenue report. I can say that our revenues are coming in as expected. We haven't really started drawing down all of the funds from the grants, so you won't see a lot of activity, um, in the revenue report. But there's certainly no concerns and I can very happily say that our assessments have been collected, so that's something. And, um, hey, I, I will, I will predict this a little bit early, but, um, I do also anticipate that our Medicaid program revenues might be higher than we originally budgeted for, so that's a positive. But otherwise, there's, there's nothing dramatic to discuss from the revenue.
Don't spend them.
Yep, we'll, we'll find someplace to use that money. Are there any questions?
On the revenue?
From the revenue perspective? Similarly, our expenses in both the general fund and, as I mentioned, the grant funds are, there's not a ton of grant fund expenditures yet, cause we need to draw that, that money down. There are encumbrances, that we're planning on spending, but we, we haven't spent much of it. And there's nothing really that stands out on the expenditures. Everything seems to be between what we've expended and what we've encumbered. Again, early in the year, we don't necessarily have all of our encumbrances in. So if you look at, uh, you know, the current available balance, i- it's not necessarily an accurate reflection at this time of the year. The one, uh, number that does stand out, that's a large red number that I did want to bring to people's attention. Exactly. Is that ninety-three hundred, uh, non-public programs on the back of the general expenditure report. It, it says the current available balance is a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in the red. I'd like to direct you to the grant expenditure review. Those funds, the ninety-three hundred, are offset by circuit breaker. So it's just a matter of where those encumbrances have been placed right now. And if you look at the, the Fund Twenty-Eight Circuit Breaker, you'll see that the current available balance after those encumbrances is two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, which will more than offset what we have in the negative on the ninety-three. So it's definitely not anything, i- i- it looks like this big red number. There's no concern there at all.
It is a big red number.
Cause I was comparing that to the fifty-one dollars. I'm like, I'll give you a fifty-one bucks, but.
Well, I don't, I don't typically talk about the thousand here, a thousand there, those pan out, but when you see those larger red numbers, I like to make sure you understand.
Appreciate it.
I also have the personnel report submitted. Uh, it is a bit, it might feel heavy. That's because this is, we updated it with a lot of the, um, changes that happened from the beginning, from the beginning of the year. You also, I'm sorry, were there questions? I, always. You also were provided separately as a hard copy when I came in, two other, one individual sheet, which admittedly is a little bit difficult to read. I did not print this, Jane, so I apologize and it adds. The individual sheet is the paraeducators and they are listed by building and grade. The larger, more visible package that you have is all of our, uh, faculty, teaching staff and, uh, coaches. And that will indicate everyone by building and by grade slash department. That was a request that came up at our last meeting and we wanted to make sure that, cause there have been a lot of changes. So sometimes even on the personnel report, there may be a few people where it says they were added, but it may have been a, a transition from one, um, position to another. So if you do have any questions when you review that report, please feel free to send me an email.
So do we have any significant unfilled positions at this time?
We have, we have two full-time positions, uh, that are open. One is Spanish at the high school and we actually, uh, just hired, the, uh, candidate this week, so, um, he's relocating to our, uh, to ra- our immediate area from the Boston area. So, uh, he said his, his, the latest he would be here, uh, we are hoping to have him for Monday, um, but he's looking for an apartment. And so, um, he said the latest is the twenty-seventh of September, but we're hoping for Monday. Um, and we're really excited about, uh, him. He's got quite a bit of experience. He's done ten years teaching, uh, all over the world, frankly. And he is from Madrid, so he's a native Spanish speaker and, um, we're really thrilled to have him coming on board. And, uh, the other is, uh, the reading specialist at the middle school, which we've actually filled part-time with the, uh, individual who is doing the point four for the humanities position. So, um, we do have some, um, reading services being provided at this time, but it's not by the reading specialists that we are still looking for. We actually had an individual, um, she resigned, she, uh, we hired her in, um, May, she resigned in July before starting. So we have been on the hunt ever since, um, and it's unfortunate, cause that's one of those, we got way ahead of it and we hired a great person. And then she said she found someone closer to home. So that's just, we've called the local universities, colleges. We're having a, a really hard time finding a middle school. That's the only way to see it.
My other report, the facilities and projects update, is mostly good news. Uh, I shouldn't say mostly, it's all good news. Um, the AHRER work at the high school, the, um, that's all completed and our responses have been submitted to DLS, the Department of Labor Services. They've, uh, reviewed the work and they're happy with where things stand right now. The baseball softball field work, uh, Scott, our, uh, interim director of facilities, he actually, personally started removing the old backstop and the company is already out there, starting on the new fencing and working on the fields. So we anticipate that to go smoothly and in a timely fashion. The track area was repaired, so those track repairs were completed. Uh, we still appear to be on schedule with respect to the tennis courts and, um, the, actually, that's really the only thing we have left as, as a big piece, is the tennis courts. The vestibules have all been completed. And we just scheduled, um, we got quotes for the safety laminate for the new vestibules and we're scheduling that. Scott was on the phone with them this afternoon, trying to make sure they get in and that work will definitely be completed before the end of September.
Thank you.
How are we doing as far as, uh, under budget on that or on budget? On the, we had enough to exceed and.
Uh, we're, we're definitely within the realm of what we approved for the numbers. The, though, we haven't been invoiced for the baseball and the softball field. We have, still are working on the quotes that, that we were given, similar to the tennis courts, so that there are big pieces of the work that it's, it's not finalized. But I don't anticipate, th- those projects are not necessarily a large, um, there's not a lot of variance with them. When they provided those quotes, they were pretty firm. So I don't see, I don't think that there will be any tremendous variances. We should be definitely okay.
And the weather's not gonna delay too much and cost us more?
So the, it should not. We're not anticipating that. There is still the off-chance that it will delay us a bit, but, um, we are still anticipating that all of the work will be done prior to the season's beginning. And are there any other questions on the facility?
Can I, may I have clarification of something?
Absolutely.
Baseball and softball fields. Okay, I'm at the high school. I'm in the parking lot and I'm looking down the hill. There's a field there that used to be where the soccer teams played. Is that not the piece of land that is part of this baseball softball landscape to follow? Piece of land? Is that not the outfield of the baseball?
Part of it, yeah. Some part of it will, will be.
But, but that's where football's been.
Exactly. So I'm so confused.
I thought.
So we were.
Get it mapped out that they weren't.
It is.
Right today, yesterday, I went there because I was, went to the soccer game. I was excited. They were using the upper field, woo-hoo. Then I went into volleyball, but on the way I noticed football was out there. And so then I looked and it's all lined. It's like a foot, it's a football field, but I thought that was, this project was that piece of land.
To keep them off the fields, to keep it in better.
So we didn't let soccer play there, because this was, I thought, and again, I could be wrong.
Soccer was, the soccer was moved because the field, the field space was better for, um, for, for them. W- w- was the discussion that, that we had had. Right now, they're not working on the out, they're not working on the outfield. I, I would have to check with Robert. We'll have to circle back and, and take a look at what it is that specifically is happening. I wasn't, I haven't been there.
I guess my simple question is, this landscaping to follow,
Yep.
is that the land that there are lines on for the practice football field right now?
Yes, they should not be practicing there. That's, I think that's the bottom line.
Yeah, but, well, that was the other part, was that soccer field was not in great condition while a lot of kids were getting hurt. Which is only gonna be made worse by football on it.
Or is it safe for the football field? I mean, is that, I guess that's the other question.
But yeah, I, that's, um, you know, people that were pulling up to the school were like, wait a minute. So soccer can't play here. They're not doing anything, but, but they can line the field for football and what's gonna happen during baseball season?
I'll check, I'll check in with Robert and I'll have the answers.
Cause what soccer went over to the middles, I mean.
Soccer went over to the comp, to the complex, because there, it's just a much nicer field space for them. So it was more, that was really the driving force behind the soccer move. We certainly do want to keep the field space conducive for the outfield, for the baseball softball, so.
We, we, we need a solution, because this comes up all the time.
Yeah, I thought we had it with the map.
If we're sharing sports in the upper field, which it sounds like we are, cause soccer plays there, field hockey plays there. We need a designated spot for football to practice.
Can the athletic director come? And present, like with visual aids?
He, he did.
He did, he gave us a map, that's, but, but I.
I was under the assumption that football was gonna be shifted.
Yeah, but, but I guess, I guess, I guess, you know, it's, it, right, that's what we have to do. We have to figure out where they could be, because it's not, it's not as simple enough to just say they can't be there. We have to, you know, where do they go? Because they can't be on their field, so, well, not their field, they can't be on the field. And where, and they need to practice, so.
Right, right.
Where do they go?
Right. And so when I asked this originally, because in previous years, they were behind the rock, but apparently behind the rock is on the softball outfield. So my question is, when you're looking down the hill, here's the, the field that, I think that has a well, I don't know if it's working. At some point, we put water there. Then you have the baseball field, you have the softball field. Then there's all this land to the left.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, is that not big enough for any team to practice on? Any team? I mean, is it big enough? I don't, I don't know. It's like sort of directly in front of the rock to the woods, cause there was a, there's a old, I don't know, that's the back, there's an old backstop on that side as well, so I don't know if, before my time, that was the baseball field.
It might puddle over there? I can't remember. Does that get really wet?
I don't, I don't know.
Actually, I thought that Robert had showed us that as football, but going this way instead of. So.
Yeah, going this way.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Going like from the parking lot towards the rock.
When did he give this presentation? When was this presentation? Maybe that's, I wasn't the car.
It probably was.
So again, I, I mean, I, listen, I get it. I mean, foot, obviously we all want football to practice. But I, my point being, if they said it wasn't safe for soccer, why would it be safe for football before the renovations?
And I do remember it being a safety conversation, not that it was just better conditions, um, at the complex. I don't feel like that was ever the conversation about soccer moving.
It was definitely part of the conversation, that it was a nicer field space. And then we went and, and spoke to the youth league.
I think it was a little bit of, we didn't want to dig up the outfield of the baseball.
It was both, it was absolutely.
And then that side field, the side of the driveway wasn't big enough for it, so the soccer.
And then the selling point was that field happens to be better. But it wasn't the, the driving force. Like I said, I want everybody to practice that, that's not it. I just, we had the presentation and then when I saw it yesterday, I was like, wait a minute, but this isn't what they told us was happening. So that's my only question. I mean, the, the boys need to play, we just. Is that the, my question is, is that the landscape we're fixing right there?
We'll find that out.
We will.
We're gonna have to start like labeling field A, field B, field C.
Eventually too, so it'll actually kind of give it a defined space for next year. Just right now, we'll be, uh.
Okay, just a, just a question again, uh, safety concern for football.
Are there any other questions on the?
Do we want to just talk about the mold at the high school? I know Scott sent an email tonight.
Sure. So as of this evening at about five thirty, we have confirmation that we are, there was air testing done in five of, five rooms. There was air testing done in seven rooms. And five of them were identified as having concerns. And we have professional cleaners that are coming in, um, late tomorrow into Saturday. And we will be professionally cleaning those areas. And then we have, um, worked with one of the testing labs to remain open for us during the weekend. And we're gonna have air sampling and testing done through the weekend and hopefully have, uh, an answer as to whether or not we can move the students back even prior to Monday.
But they have been moved, so.
They have been relocated currently and they will remain relocated until we know that those rooms are safe and conducive to return to. So we're hoping that that could be Monday.
Thank you.
Do we know the source yet? Just time or?
So, uh, it, it would appear, it's the humidity. In fact, I was speaking with our, uh, consultant, Dr. DeFalco and I were both speaking with our environmental consultant and he was saying, it's everywhere. He is, he himself is working with over six schools that have been closed completely. And, and there are colleges also that he's working with and. So it's just this, this season has been terrible with the humidity and, and the heat.
We, I felt good hearing that the, that the levels were, were higher, but not as high as what he is seeing in other places, which I thought was good.
Absolutely.
It's not great news for us, but at least we're not through the roof in the thousands of.
He's saying where we might have a fifty.
Yeah, it's even like rooms we were worried about, we tested, we're negative. So I'm like, well, that's great. And they're in the same wing, so it's not, you know.
Right?
Yes.
He was saying our, our highs were like in the fifty thousand count or sixty thousand count and there are places that have had five hundred thousand. Just six hundred thousand counts. We're like, wow.
Yeah, so he was like, he, you know, said to us, like, keep it in perspective. You know, they're gonna do air scrubbing and cleaning. Back and test those five spaces.
And we were very clear, we did consult on, with the numbers and said, is this something that we need to be concerned about the rest of the building?
Should we do the whole building, the whole wing?
Do the building, the wing, and he said, absolutely not necessary.
Not with the counts where they are.
Thank you to who, whomever finds these things and, and brings them to our attention. I think, you know, I think it should be noted that our district does a great job of when things are, are brought to our attention, that we, we don't mess around. We, we, A, we admit it and send out notices to parents and B, we get their remediation going immediately. And I, I, I think that there are some districts that don't do that and they get to five hundred and six hundred percent mold, so, you know, well done.
And the last piece of my reports are facilities use forms that you have for approval. Um, they are a few of our typically approved use forms, I believe you have.
They, all of these, well, one is the same agency, just two buildings and one is.
Is that an A or an L?
Yeah, I think, I think they just maybe forgot what it was, you know.
I think they were writing too fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too.
It's the same person.
It is the same person.
It's the basketball, it's the basketball league and then there's the Girl Scouts.
Yeah, but they've used, all of these groups, well, the two groups have used these facilities in these manner before.
Correct.
And they, and the basketball understands that if we have an event or a game or whatever, they're.
They get ousted.
It's at the elementary school, so you really don't.
Well, there's the middle school.
They actually used to use Millville.
There's a middle school and the.
That's just for tryouts. Oh, what are you, I'm missing where everyone travels to.
October through March, she has, there's an email attached.
I was surprised they didn't have Hartnett on.
It's Millville AFM.
That's the second one, there's two.
This is smart.
One is for the middle school, one is for.
Right, that's just one week though.
Yeah, and directly used.
But then the next one, they should have actually checked out Hartnett, I think, on the front.
And, and Millville.
And Millville.
Millville AFM in Hartnett.
Oh.
Apologies.
No, no, oh my gosh, no.
Would have been.
So it's, um.
You sat through all of this to get to this?
You should have waived this.
I'm sorry.
Actually, it was really interesting and I didn't mind, I would have been home with my kids, so.
Just a nice break, any break.
Um, no, so there are the different schools for tryouts and evaluations. And then the games start in December. So the different schools are for, the rec league is usually in the middle school here. And, um, then we also go into Millville. And then the travel league this year, we are hoping to be able to host as well. And that was, I kinda sent that email because it was confusing, so rec is Saturdays and travel would be Sundays. And right now, we're looking at starting practices in November. And we have a hard stop, um, in March this year because we don't wanna have to deal with too many school breaks. Cause it's, we have a lot.
That March fourth, that, that March fourth, that one?
Yes, that's a Friday night, so that will be our final championship.
So we would need a custodian on the Sundays. And they, they typically have mid-afternoon games, I think, for the travel league.
Yeah, travel would be, um, and they're actually in another meeting right now with that. Um, but it's usually like late morning to the afternoons for travel.
That's on Sunday.
Yes.
That would be a custodial.
Yeah, but it's usually, I think we usually approve it with them, they pay for it.
And then there is the possibility, we had the option, um, Aaron, Kate, the boys varsity coach came to us and said, he would run a K through two clinic for us. This literally happened yesterday, so I haven't sent anything. Um, but one of his options was possible Sunday morning, but that's something we could, you know, his thought was, his kids ref for us. So Saturdays might be tough, so he was looking at Sundays, but I said, you know, I'm not sure for facilities and parents. So I put the word out on Facebook today and we'll see how it goes, you never tell. So that's another option for Sundays that I may wind up kind of tweaking a little bit as well. But we understand that Sundays, you know, we do have to usually pay for some.
So Monday through Friday, are you looking for one school, whichever school you can get, or all three schools?
We would be looking for probably at least two, at least this school and Millville. It depends on our numbers, like honestly, right now, our numbers are very low. I'm hoping they pick up, I think people just aren't sure yet, so there's a chance we may just need one. Um, oh, and AFM as well, so yeah, all three probably.
I think we usually adjust the time though, on your, on your email here, you have Monday through Friday, five PM to eight thirty PM.
Yeah.
This building is usually not available because of our school basketball team until six thirty. And, and, and there were years where practices were scheduled at six and it just became, people were arguing over who was supposed to have the gym. But I believe we didn't do this last year, but when we approved it in the past, we approved it at a later time for this building.
That's fine, this is my first go at it, so I literally copied kind of what he had and figured, that's why I wanted to.
And there was no league last year, right, so.
There was only travel and we didn't use any facilities, obviously, so. Again, not sure what we'll wind up needing, so I just kinda put everything out there because I have no idea.
So let's, I'm just trying to write down what we need to do so we can approve it.
Usually have to waive the facility usage fee, but if they're using it on a, with a custodian, they, that is at their expense. But I don't see that, I don't think these are, I think there's a page missing.
I don't think, I don't think the dates are right, or I don't think the, the form, I don't think the forms are right.
There they are, these are the current ones.
What?
These are the current forms, I just had to fill one out too.
No, 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 I don't think, cause this only says Hartnett Middle School.
It doesn't match the.
There's nothing that says MEA.
Yeah, I sent like six of them.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
I sent a lot.
So there's nothing that says MEA, there's nothing, so.
So all three should be checked, Hartnett, AFM.
Yeah, they had me fill out a different one for each one.
Yeah, 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 so I just don't think we got them all.
Oh, okay.
But the, but the bottom line is, you would like the three schools from.
Every day.
Every day of the week, including Saturday and Sunday, from November eighth, essentially.
Well, there's nothing here for Saturday.
No, October seventh.
No, it's just saying, we just didn't get it.
Oh, no, that's not you.
Right here.
From November eighth, no, October.
And Hartnett on Saturdays.
From October to March fourth.
Yes.
So from October to March fourth, understanding you can't have this school till six thirty.
Right.
And you can't have any facility if there's already an event planned.
Absolutely.
And then the custodian fee for Saturday is in Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday, there will be custodian.
Yep, we budget that into it.
If somebody wants to motion that.
If you motion to approve.
Second. Second, okay. The motion on the floor is, is spoken. To approve the, is it BMYBA or L?
BL.
L, basketball league.
I had to do so many forms, I was.
That's okay, it's all good. For Hartnett Middle School, uh, Millville Elementary School and, well, I don't know, is it?
AFM.
Who's got the, AFM has the gym, okay, AFM, um, beginning in October through March fourth. Every evening, Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, at this school, not till six thirty and on Saturday and Sunday, provided that custodial fees are paid for, um.
I just have a.
Discussion.
Discussion, yes, I have a discussion. Um, doesn't the band people use, or cheerleading use that gym as well at some point?
They do, Winter Guard does, uh, it's usually at seven PM.
Yeah, but I would consider that a school event, so they would have to.
Well, right, but, but they're, they're trying to set a schedule, so if, if that is really not available, then we should consider that. I just, I know that we come in and they're, they're in there, so I don't know what their, what their schedule is. But I'm assuming that Jen has to plan where she's gonna send people, so, um, you have to figure that out.
So, but I also do remember that the.
I mean, we can approve it as.
The cafeteria and out here sometimes.
Can I? I think they might break into groups.
Yes, go ahead.
No, that was me.
Yes, no.
So we're approving a facility use.
Yep.
Are we actually like, the scheduling piece? What are we doing?
Well, it matters.
I understand that, but then this needs to be captured within the doc, the document, like this is.
Because this, once we approve it, this gets sent to the school and then the secretary thinks that they have use of it at the times listed on this form. So this is actually, this is inaccurate. If this gets sent to middle school right now, they're going to tell our school events that they can't use, that, that the gym is booked.
Or Jen and her group are gonna get there and the school group will be there and then it will be awkward for everyone.
Right, but like this assumption that we actually know all of the events that are going to be taking place in these buildings is incorrect, right? Like, we don't know all of them.
It does say that the school event comes first, so I think that the secretary or whoever gets this would see the sports schedule and they would handle that.
But they're have, they're asked to have, I mean, this is something that has happened annually up until last year when it couldn't happen. But it has happened annually and there are all, there might be a art show or there might be a whatever. And that has come, I mean, you've, I'm sure had to cancel practice or.
Yeah, I know in the past, we've gotten emails a couple days before being like, this got switched and now.
That's what I'm trying to say, like, do we approve that this organization use our, uses our facility?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the scheduling piece is not something that we do here.
No.
Except that we do, because it says it right here of what we're approving.
Of the time of the gym, right.
And we need to fix the process so that it goes to the scheduler first and then comes to us, because we can't do this every time. We can't do this every year and every time someone wants to use a facility. And I'm not saying this on, please, don't think that I am, that this process is flawed.
There is a scheduler, there is no scheduler.
Well, what, we're not the schedulers.
The administrative assistant of the buildings that books out and blocks out the time in, in the cafeteria, in the auditorium of the gym.
So I think the important question here is, does the color guard cheerleading school basketball team, do they have a schedule that we can send to Jen and say, go around this?
Yeah.
Cause that's what it sounds like would solve the problem.
I think the challenge with this is just that it, it's every building, every day for October to March. Which, which, but the saving kinda grace in that, which is causing some of this, I think, is that if there's a school event.
Right.
Then the school has, so what I, what I would recommend, if the committee would move forward with the motion, then we can work with the, um, the BMYBL and the individuals that actually does all the booking, to make sure that people aren't double booked and overbooked. And then you guys know where you're going.
Because we, we obviously.
That's okay, we can do that if.
Cause we have no games during the week, it's just practices and we don't have teams that need every day. So this was again, just like broad scope, like.
So if we have this, then we can schedule this in with everything else.
Yeah, and if you say we can only do this day or that day, then that's what we do, I mean, it's, we make it work. But clearly, on a separate one, you would like the middle school, because this was separate, the middle school for the tryouts, November eighth, ninth, tenth, twelfth. Very specifically from five thirty to seven thirty and we are telling you it's not available at five thirty.
Yeah, six thirty is fine.
No, but actually, so this is where it helps at a specific, this is before winter sports, that starts after Thanksgiving.
So basketball's not in session.
Right, they don't.
So we'd have to worry about volleyball.
So should all have.
Volleyball's not done suddenly at the high school. So we're okay with this.
Usually this does not have a conflict.
This is fine.
It's when they schedule their whole season out because we approve them, rightfully so, and say, you have practice every Tuesday night at seven PM. And then all of a sudden, our band, which is not scheduling right now because they're in their fall, but they have the winter. So then they come out after November eleventh and say, Winter Guard is every Tuesday, Thursday night, six to nine.
But I think that's where the administrative assistant that blocks the time will come in very helpful. Because she'll block this timeout and then when color guard says, I need it from five to six, she'll contact you and say, uh, you guys can't have the gym until six o'clock or six thirty.
And then we can pivot, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, does anybody have any other discussion? All those in favor of the approving the BMYBL as amended and proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstention? So the administration will work with you on a calendar that works, for each of the schools. Forever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for volunteering, I know that these organizations are often run by a very small handful of people.
All right, we still have the Girl Scouts.
They're the cafeteria, no one wants the.
Cafeteria and the tennis courts, well, the fields, I guess, there are no tennis, I was gonna say, there are no tennis courts, but the fields. And do we know that there's not soccer in those fields?
They're, they're pretty flexible, they're at the complex, so they have a lot of different places they could go.
Mm-hmm.
They can go to the softball field, they can go, you know what I mean? I don't think they, I think it's just so they can go outside and do an activity.
All right, anybody wanna entertain this? Well, entertain it.
Second.
Second by, was that you, Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention?
And we're waiving the fee for them? Was it, does anyone fill that out?
I don't know, I, truthfully, I would love to see like an app, because I don't know what group one, group two, I don't know.
It's on the, so yeah, we don't have the full packet, but on the first three pages of this PDF, they're in it. We just need a refresher copy in front of us.
So we're just saying no.
Are you missing paperwork?
Well, no, this is the actual form, but just the.
Just like introductory stuff.
Yeah, like the instructions tell you group one is who.
Oh, I see, I see.
We used to ask for the fee to be waived on.
I think this might be a group two, actually, it's probably like the basketball.
I think it is too.
It should be considered a two, which is a maybe recharge.
Yeah.
It is there charging.
Three recharge, two is a maybe, one would be a school. Instead of doing it for the PDF.
Okay.
I'm a one.
Yeah, anyway, we good?
No.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, school committee forum. Um, first, I would like to thank Katie and Madison for joining us, um, and to Jill Fallis for, um, making that happen. Uh, I'm very excited to have students back, I think it's huge, I hope they get engaged and they enjoy the process. We've had some great student, um, representatives in the past and I'm looking forward to having them. And then secondly, I wanted to make a statement, um, and it's an apology. Um, I know that in the past, when we've spoken about, um, Blackstone Valley Technical School, um, I make some assumptions that are based in the creation of the school as it first existed and underrepresented students. Um, and occasionally I name students and that was never my intention. I think what Blackstone Valley Tech does, the programs that they provide for students, the opportunities they provide for students are wonderful. I think that there are underrepresented students who don't get those options. Um, and I think there are career paths, uh, that aren't provided to students who really need them. Is that a responsibility of Blackstone Valley Tech? No, is that a responsibility of BMR? Perhaps in the future, as we look at different career choices. But I never, ever intended my comments to take away from the great work that the school does, nor the work that those students do who are in it. I think society is changing and we are expecting so much more of people. My comment earlier today of the fact that you can't even be an LPN anymore, can't get that degree, is really sad. Cause there's some wonderful LPNs out there, but now it's requiring more college or more work or more technical skills. And so, you know, BBT took advantage of that and created these technology branches and computer science that encourage students to apply for college. And fifty percent of their student body goes on to college and I'm sure is tremendously successful. And they have wonderful opportunities for them and, and that's where the place students should be. That's a decision parents make, that's a decision students make about where their career path should end. And that I never intended to take any of the pride away from that. I just do believe that there are holes in our educational opportunities and that it's hard to get plumbers and electricians and, and students who would really excel in those paths aren't given the opportunity. That's not to say one student took a seat of another student. I never intended to say that, so I publicly apologize to anybody's name I may have mentioned, I should never have done that. That was not my intention. Um, and I think parents should be proud of, of their student efforts regardless of where their student goes to school and be proud of the schools their students go to. I think it's really important and I think what it provides us as a school community is a great. And I think what it provides us as a school community is a great opportunity to say, where are those holes and how can we fill them? And how can we make sure that every student is on the path that fits their needs? And I think we're doing that. And so, I'm excited, um, for that. And I, I, if I made anybody feel less about the, the options they chose, or the schools they attended, that was never, ever, ever my intention. So, I apologize. Anyone else?
I do have something I, I wanna bring up, and I did, um, I asked a question before. And I understand that this is possibly, um, more of an administrative question. But, you know, year to year, we use family ID for sports and registration. Is there a way we can possibly do the same for all of the nine hundred forms every parent has to fill out at the beginning of each year? Is there a way we could make that also online? Now, we've, you know, I mean, kids have done online school, so we have that service. But is there a way that we can make that easier, other than sending home the same copies every single year and having the parents fill it all out again? With that?
Just making it electronic and.
I didn't get any this year. Wait, did, did a packet come home?
Whoops.
Wow, check the backpack.
I know. I did a fifth period one, but I have to say, it was a lot smaller than I remember.
High school?
Middle school was an email.
Yep, it was emailed.
Middle school was the packet when you picked up on opening day, and then elementary school was papers that came home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
That's impressive.
It's just so much easy, you know, it's like we, you re-register for a, you know, a sport, and it's, it's already got all your information, the kid's information, confirm anything, I'm like.
Then it's in there.
This is so easy, and then, you know, like, my husband and I are like drawing sticks over who gets the hand cramp.
Let, let us, let us look into a way to do that. That's a great suggestion. I am now panicked, because I have got nothing for my voice, so I'm thinking, where?
Two weeks, so I actually don't know. That it's, it should be an Aspen thing, or an XQ thing.
Yeah, there should be a.
Yeah, whatever.
Because everything is in there, like, even there's school pictures in there, when you look around.
Let us, um, that's a great point, Amanda. Let us look into that.
And, you know, with that, I thought of, you know, the forms that they fill out for facilities, you know, is there? Because we were kind of missing that, and maybe if even putting, you know, I realize that's probably a bigger part, but, you know, putting that sort of stuff online, where perhaps, you know, administration could check and say, hey, here's what's being used so far. I don't know, just a few more eyes on it, a little bit less, um, like she said, you know, filling out six forms.
Yeah.
I've been on that end too, when you don't really know what you're doing, and it's kind of like, yeah, sure.
Ask for everything?
Right.
Cover all bases.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to, I, I heard, um, I think that, I think our, uh, student here was Kylie.
Oh, Kylie.
That's what I heard. I.
Kylie's.
Kylie, yeah, okay.
Okay, Kylie, thank you.
No, that's okay. So, um, I heard one of the young ladies talk about service learning hours, so I just wanna put a plug for a couple things in town. Parks and Rec is often looking for volunteers. So, if, if our students need some volunteer hours, Celeste Langlois, um, is, is there to help. She can be found on Facebook, or, you know, around town, if they need contacts, they can get me if they don't know how to get her. Um, I am part of the Friends of the Library. They have about five or six different initiatives going on right now that they need, um, student volunteers for, so if people wanna do that. And on Sundays, every Sunday morning, I work with the May Organization, MAE Organization, uh, for the, working with some homeless folks. We feed them, um, a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, and a, a cold lunch and a hot lunch. Um, and so, if they ever needed hours, they could reach out to me, and I'd be happy to, for assistance. And we also, um, hand out clothes and hygiene products and that kind of stuff. So, we're always looking for young adults, and I know, um, my Cumberland students participate in a lot of the May Organization stuff, but it's a hop, skip, and a jump to and socket for our Blackstone students. So, if anybody's ever looking for opportunities, I could put them to work as long as I don't have to pay them.
Are you saying the May Organization, Tammy?
MAE, yes. And Mrs. Denise Dano, who's a former teacher, runs the, is, I think she's the president of the Friends of the Library for Blackstone.
Okay.
That's all for me.
Anyone else? Okay, um, our next meeting is, uh, September 30th. It is a workshop, a working workshop, so come prepared casually, ready to work. We will have pizza before the meeting. We'll start at 5:30. Um, and Carrie Purcell is going to join us and really try to engage us in this next blueprint process, and what do we think the overarching, um, goals should be for this district? And, um, you know, what is our vision as the school committee? You know, if, if we're asking the administration to create this new blueprint, it needs to make sure that it fits within our, our vision. So, um, you know, taking all of what we have and taking her guidance, trying to work through that. Um, talking about school committee expectations, what are the expectations for being a member of the school committee and reviewing that? Lots of folks who are new since the last time we did that, so it's time to review it. Uh, and, I don't know if there'll be anything else on it, but, um, I know some folks were concerned about whether or not, if we're eating, we're violating our kind of mask policy, but we will make a big, huge, open, six foot apart from each other square to work and make it a working meeting and enjoy some camaraderie, which we have not done as a committee. And I think that's important to do, to get to know each other and, and work together as a team. So, I'm looking forward to that. Uh, and if anybody has things they would like on the first meeting in October agenda, um, please reach out and let me know. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.